Good evening. I'd like to call to order this the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. Please rise for a moment of silence. Of the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Armady?
Here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laughin?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Tata?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandry?
Here.
Cervoni?
Here. Thank you. On to the consent agenda.
Mister Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through H, J, and K.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The consent agenda has passed. There were no items removed for discussion from the consent agenda. On to the public question and answer period. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Darrell Stancuna, eighteen, Old Village Circle, Wallingford. Um, last year, this place was pretty full, which is pretty full tonight, too, but not as much as... I've never seen that record on TV. I wasn't here. But there was a big aruckus. I'd never seen that either, uh, from looking at the screen. And it was someone, uh, Morgenstein has designed or something, and Counselor Fishbein had nominated and pushed, uh, Counselor Zandry to get on for the council, which is all fine and dandy. That was last year. But now we have a one-eighty, and Counselor Fishbein now is filing, uh, ethics charges or whatever you want to call it against the same person that he pushed to get up on the panel. And there was a whole crowd of audience here. So it's just very confusing. Um, I tried to ask a question at the hearing a month ago, and you couldn't talk from the public in comments. So I'm mentioning today that if, you know, the town could withdraw this ridiculous case, uh, Mister Zandry has been a outstanding citizen. I've known him since I was five. We used to play kickball at Pond Hill. He used to let me win sometimes with Connect Four in Miss Camarino's class. I don't know if you ever heard of her, but if you're from Wallingford, you would know who she was. But anyway, this is ridiculous, waste of time. This man was having a tin can collecting for fireworks for this town for years when it wasn't even getting funded. And his dad was out there, too, at the garbage dump and recycling. So this is totally nonsense. And I'm asking, requesting for the town to withdraw this case because this is an awful way to do it. He's not running again. And just let the man go peacefully. And if the town doesn't want to withdraw it, maybe Mister Fishbein, if you could please withdraw this ridiculous, uh, case that you're presenting against this man that you pushed forward to sit next to you up there. So I am strongly suggesting, uh, the town withdraw it, but asking if Mister Fishbein could please withdraw this embarrassing situation. Um...
So Mister Stancuna, our rules make references to, uh, limiting comments to the, that are personal in nature. And, um, I guess I'd call your attention to that, that our council rules limit discussions that are personally directed.
Uh, this isn't personal. This is from public standpoint, tax money being spent on this. Uh, so it's not anything personal.
Well, your comments are being personally directed at Mister Fishbein.
Uh, I don't see it that way. But the other subject I would like to talk about is the community pool. It's a total disaster. I've lived in this town since I was little. I know it's a pipe dream to say, okay, let's fund it. You weren't getting enough pool tags for people to buy to go there. And the ones that went there always somehow somebody contaminated it, and they had to close it down. And the thing was only open for a couple of months a year. So this revisiting about the community pool, do something else constructive with it. The pool's not working out. Maybe have like a skateboard park for these kids to help them get adjusted to after-school program. Let them have that looks like a foundation of concrete that they could go ride with the skateboards, something like that. Or even a homeless shelter next to it because everyone's bragging about the acres of land there. Add a homeless shelter. Get these people some food, a place that they could get services. So that's my strong suggestion about the community pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public question and answer? All right. There being none, I close the public question and answer period. Move on to item six.
Mister Chairman, I move we accept or approve a bid waiver to enter into an inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing via the HGAC to obtain the best pricing for the purchase of a new two thousand and twenty-four E-one one-hundred-foot rear-mounted aerial ladder tractor for up to one point eight million dollars.
Is there a second? Thank you, Counselor Marone. Evening, gentlemen. If you could please remind us who you are for the record.
Good evening. Joe Sutton, our fire chief.
Sam Wilson, deputy fire chief.
Michael Shaw, deputy fire chief.
Thank you. What do you have for us?
Uh, good evening, Mister Chairman. Uh, good evening, councilors. Uh, we're here before you tonight to seek your approval of a bid waiver to enter into an inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing via the Houston-Galveston Area Council Co-op, also known as HGAC, to obtain the best pricing for the E-one brand two thousand and twenty-four ladder truck and an E-one brand two thousand and twenty-four fifteen hundred gallon per minute pumper. My apparatus specification committee worked diligently to determine the apparatus specifications that will best meet the fire department requirements to serve the community effectively with an eye on fiscal responsibility and a reasonable delivery timeframe. Apparatus specs committee members contacted and met with several fire apparatus manufacturers over the last few months and made onsite visits to other fire departments that had acquired similar makes and models of apparatus that would have been selected for review. The members discussed with other respective fire departments their assessments of how the purchased apparatus was performing there and any issues that they may have encountered. Some of the current factors to consider for apparatus procurement are, number one, unprecedented price increases post-pandemic that have made it extremely difficult to forecast future pricing. Number two would be increased build and delivery times that are being represented are approaching four years for delivery of fire apparatus. ARPA funding was approved June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three for several department projects, including the ladder truck and pumper that we're here for tonight. Apparatus spec committee, after thorough research, has determined that in this case of both the ladder truck and the pumper requirements, the apparatus manufacturer, called E-one, can provide the best apparatus to meet the department's specifications required to serve the community effectively. Also taken into consideration was the best pricing and reasonable build and delivery timeframes. E-one is projecting delivery times of twenty-four to twenty-six months. The other manufacturers provided us with substantially higher pricing with much longer delivery times of up to forty months. Currently, approximately one hundred towns and cities and other government entities in Connecticut are currently using HGAC cooperative for purchasing. The Wallingford Fire Department has used it several times in the last few years, uh, most recently last month to purchase an ambulance. All the procurements that we have had with HGAC were satisfactory and successful. With this completed research and information, we're seeking approval for the bid waiver to enter into a contract with HGAC to leverage best pricing nationwide based on volume and discount pricing for an E-one ladder truck and pumper. Thank you, Mister Chairman, for the opportunity to provide this opening statement, and I am available to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. So thi- this bid waiver is not merely about how unique the vehicle is. Um, you've also taken into, you've gone shopping, and you've taken into consideration price, and you've also taken into consideration build and delivery time?
That is correct. Those are two of the major factors. Price, uh, it's been hard to forecast, uh, going out, but we had four manufacturers that we reached out to. Uh, one of them declined to even speak with us because they have so much business, and they weren't interested. And the other three met with our specification committee. And this one here with E-one, E-one was the, uh, best pricing that we got, best responsible, lowest bidder. So it sort of plays into it. And the delivery timeframe, especially taken in consideration to ARPA, money, uh, is, should be spent, uh, what I was directed here was by December thirty-first, uh, two thousand and twenty-six.
Questions from the council? Questions from the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Armady?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laughin?
Yes.
Marone? Tata?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Cervoni?
Yes. Motion passes. On to number seven.
Mister Chairman...
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Mister Chairman, I move we, uh, accept a bid waiver to enter into an inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing via the HGAC to obtain the best pricing for the purchase of a new two thousand and twenty-four E-one fifteen gallons per minute.
Fifteen hundred gallons.
Fifteen hundred gallons per minute pumper for up to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Fishbein, with the second. Uh, similar situation?
Similar situation, uh, with the specification committee. We had a separate committee that was looking at the pumper, and, uh, the information that came back was the same. Uh, E-one presented us with the best, lowest pricing, responsible pricing, and one of the more attractive delivery times.
Questions from the council? Questions from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Armady?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laughin?
Yes.
Marone? Tata?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Cervoni?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Thank you, council. Have a good night.
You too.
On to number eight.
Mister Chairman, I move we approve a bid waiver request for Dynamic Sand Blasting and Painting LLC of Eaton Town, New Jersey to clean and paint sidewall of West Side Water Storage Tank.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mister Amway, could you please remind us who you are for the record?
Good evening. Neil Amway, general manager for the Wallingford Water and Sewer Divisions.
What's going on?
Uh, the Wallingford Water Division is requesting a bid waiver and a budget transfer of two hundred fifteen thousand five hundred dollars to clean and paint the sidewall of the West Side Ward Water Storage Tank. The tank painting project was publicly bid and awarded to Dynamic Sand Blasting and Painting LLC of Eaton, New Jersey at a bid price of seven hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Subsequent to the tank painting project being awarded, Water Division staff, along with our consulting engineers, observed that the condition of the paint on the sidewall of the West Side Water Storage Tank was worsening at a pace that would require action by the Water Division sooner rather than later. As such, the Water Division is requesting a bid waiver and a budget transfer that will allow the Water Division to utilize the existing specifications and contractor to complete the cleaning and painting of the sidewall of the West Side Water Storage Tank. A standalone project to clean and paint the West Side Tank may not result in a lower price, particularly with regards to contractor mobilization and demobilization expenses, as well as general overhead and insurance costs. Additionally, cleaning and painting the sidewall of the West Side Storage Tank will delay completion of the overall tank painting project. So the first item is a bid waiver to utilize the same contractor that won the tank painting project to complete this change order.
Um, and then item nine is the budgetary transfer to pay for it?
Yes, and I'll provide a little more detail at that time.
That's fine. Uh, questions from the council? Questions or comments from the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Armady?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laughin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tata?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Cervoni?
Yes. Motion passes. On to item nine.
Mister Chairman, I move we approve a transfer on the amount of two hundred and fifteen five thousand, two hundred fifteen thousand five hundred dollars from the Masonic Water Storage Tank account to the West Side Water Storage Tank account.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
So this budget transfer is two hundred fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. That does include a ten percent contingency. I want to point out that this, we are not, the Water Division is not asking for new dollars. What this is, is how we, in water and sewer, each project gets its own sub-account or line item. So in this case, we have additional funds in the Masonic Tank Paint, Masonic Tank Painting line item, and we're asking to move that to the West Side Tank Painting item. So in some respects, this is an administrative financial move to really how we do our accounting, and it rolls into, um, depreciation.
Questions from the council? Questions from the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Armady?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laughin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tata?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Cervoni?
Yes. Thank you, Mister Amway. We will see you in a few minutes.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Item ten is an update from the EDC regarding the railroad station project. Well, good evening. I can't say remind us who you are for the record because, uh, at least two of you are sitting here for the first time in the capacity in which you're sitting here. So why don't we start with my right?
Uh, Don Crouch, economic development specialist.
Welcome aboard.
Uh, John Sullivan. I'm a local developer and entrepreneur.
David Stein, Silver Petrocelli and Associates Architects.
Welcome back, Mister Stein. So what's going on with the train station?
Alrighty. It's great to be here tonight to give you guys an update on the historic railroad, um, station and potential future use. Uh, last September, the town submitted a grant for three point five million dollars, uh, which would have been a one point seven five million dollar investment from the town. Ultimately, the town was not selected for the grant. Um, since that time, we've had, uh, several conversations with different developers about different opportunities. Uh, nothing was too serious to bring to your attention. Uh, this opportunity has, uh, two phases for economic development impact. Uh, the first is rehabilitation of the building. We'll preserve and maintain, uh, this town asset and provide an interior shelf for future use. Uh, and the second will be the redevelopment will revitalize the lower portion of the town center, increase private investment in the area, and erase the distinction between uptown and downtown. Uh, recent progress in the town center includes updated zoning regulations, incentives, new and expanded businesses in the town center, and additional projects near the railroad. Uh, the historic railroad station will be a shining beacon for future development in our community and continue to serve as the gateway to Wallingford. Uh, we were looking for a prospective partner who wants to maintain Wallingford's history while investing in Wallingford's future. And without further ado, want to introduce John Sullivan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Thank you, council. Um, uh, as, uh, Don stated, uh, what we've...
You're gonna need to stay on the mic, otherwise I'll be getting the door opened.
Let me do this. That'll be easier for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I'll just repeat that. Thank you, Mister Chairman, and thank you, council. Um, as Don stated, um, I am, uh, a representative of a group of, um, business owners and developers that have an interest in Wallingford. Um, many of us are, uh, currently doing things here or exploring projects, uh, in the immediate vicinity of the historic railroad station. And, um, what our proposal, um, is, is to consider the reuse of the train station for, um, a concept that would include a food hall, um, and, uh, also potentially a, uh, a tasting bar, um, on the second floor area, um, which would also reserve some space for, uh, the arts, uh, whether that be live music, um, whether that be, um, arts performances, things in association with the, uh, the Arts Council, um, here in town. Um, and what we'd envision is, uh, working with the town to renovate this space, provide us a, uh, a blank space essentially, um, for us to fit out for this purpose. Um, it would allow visitors to our town and to this venue to experience the beauty of the building, uh, both, um, on the inside and the outside. Um, we know it's a, it's a certainly a centerpiece for the town, um, as it stands, uh, but I think the interior of the building could also be, um, an area that could equally be a focal point. Um, our vision would be to have several unique food vendors on the first floor space, um, as well as, um, uh, some, uh, seating on the first floor. And then the second floor space would include more seating, the, uh, reserved area for, uh, arts would be essentially a small stage area, and then a tasting bar, which would feature, um, local, um, distilleries, wineries, and breweries, many of which are here in town. Um, and, uh, we're very, uh, fortunate in Wallingford. We've got, uh, quite a presence, um, in that regard. Um, this has been highly successful in other communities throughout the country. Um, a few noted examples would be Eagle Square in Concord, New Hampshire, uh, locally here in Hartford at Parkville Market, but there's certainly numerous examples of this concept working, um, in many localities similar to Wallingford. Um, we feel that this use would, would clearly create, um, a draw to the, um, the downtown area, to the town center district, which has, uh, recently also been rezoned to encourage, uh, higher-density housing and other, uh, potential business uses, uh, for this area of town, um, as Don said, erasing the distinction between the uptown and downtown areas. And I think this would be an attractive draw to do that. Um, it would support those other projects as well by providing a focal point and an interest, a point of interest, um, for people who want to develop other projects in the area, um, as well as leverage the existing investment that the town has made in, um, projects such as the, uh, paving of the former Brothers property, um, uh, on the other side of the tracks. Um, it will create jobs, um, and as well as an opportunity for existing businesses, um, in the lower town center area to benefit from the increased draw, um, in foot traffic and, and, uh, traffic from other, uh, local, uh, communities in the region, um, to this area of our town. And, um, I think that, uh, the best way to kind of sum up our, our reason, rationale behind this is, you know, this is, um, an area, um, of the town, uh, which is literally been synonymous with the entry point to the town of Wallingford since its inception in the eighteen hundreds, uh, when the station was built. Uh, it was the first experience many people have had over many years coming into our town. And I think that by reusing the station, um, as a, uh, a destination venue, um, that would be attractive not only to residents of our own town, uh, but to people of the region, this would again be a gateway, um, for, uh, people to have an experience with Wallingford, um, open the doors to this section of town, uh, create, uh, much-needed economic, uh, stimulus into that particular area of the town center, and help to bolster the other projects that many of us are working on. So, um, we'd, uh, like to continue working through this process, and Dave's gonna speak a little bit to the numbers and what's entailed. Um, but I thank you again for considering it. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Again, David Stein with Silver Petrocelli. Um, you, we are the, the architect that, um, has been working on the project, um, from the, uh, inception of the grant process. Essentially, this concept was, was roughly conceived in terms of evaluating the condition of the building in which we did present a report to you. And then we, we evaluated and came up with a variety of schemes to essentially do some form of adaptive reuse to that building. Um, in our fir-, in some of our concepts, it did conceive... In our fir-, in some of our concepts, it did conceive either having a single tenant or multi-tenants through there. In John's proposal, it's essentially creating a white shell box that we would do work to the exterior, which was presented originally as part of our submission. And then on the interior, it actually is just getting it to a point where it'd be ready for, ready for John to go in and do tenant-fit-out work within that space. Our original concept included sort of more of a massive rework of the mechanical systems. As this now having a proposed tenant to come in there, there is a point in which then we do not need to sort of rework all of those mechanicals. It'd be a handoff to the tenant to take that, take that through. Obviously, those details would need to get worked out as a project would further progress. But we have done sort of an overlay and looked at that based on the numbers that we had, the projection of cost of where we would be. And with, you know, with that, this concept could proceed moving, you know, moving to the next stage that was in our original, you know, RFP and contract that we have, we have in place. So the report that we're giving is this sort of aligns with some of the original concepts that we had. In this case, now we, now there is a concept of a developer coming in, taking that, taking that to the next step. It would involve, and are you familiar with the interior of the building, mainly removing that sort of scissor stair that was originally implemented and through the Yale School of Architecture did that design work. Essentially, we would remove that to allow that first floor to have an open plan, and then from there, those concepts of the kiosk and multiple vendors could be planned out accordingly. So it's a fairly light load to the interior renovation. The exterior would still propose, there would need to be work done to the facade, work done to the entry doors, mechanical, minor mechanical upgrades that are needed, and then the tenant would sort of do their work that would go along with that. ADA improvements, the restrooms and so forth would be right-sized for that type of reuse of an assembly space for kitchen and so forth. And then an elevator would need to be installed on the interior or what we call lift, it's sort of a lighter, open, open elevator to get to that upper level that John referenced as a, you know, a gathering space on that second, on that second floor. So all of that is reasonable in terms of the investment to go in and get this ready for a tenant to then take it to fit out to the next level.
So at what point does the developer take over the expenses associated with that? I mean, is that something the town's gonna be expected to pay for?
Sure. Sure. So the way we've envisioned this is that, again, we would ask that the town commit to renovating the building to a blank space, a white space, so that we can come in and do the tenant-fit-out work. So essentially, the handoff would be most likely would be in coordination with planning this through, with the town. Some of that work would happen at the tail end of the demolition and renovation. It doesn't necessarily make sense to wait until the town's completely done for us to start doing fit-out work because some of the, for instance, the plumbing and electrical work that has to do a tenant-fit-out, well, you know, that may be behind wall spaces and things. So it's gotta kind of be coordinated in conjunction. But there would be a collaboration in that effort, and the dollars that we would commit as developers would come into play with that overall plan to renovate the building. So we would coordinate that with building department.
And I don't think it's necessarily a question for the three of you at the table, but, you know, I know we're gonna hear about the current use in the building, the adult education program, and people are gonna wanna know where that's going to go because that's something that's very important to a lot of people in town.
Yes. Tonight, it's a report out to find out what ideas there are. If there's an interest in pursuing this, there has to be a master lease, and a lot of detail still has to be developed. But if, if people are interested in this, we can begin talking with the Board of Education and school officials and determining what, what would be another site for adult education. I doubt that we would be at this point. I mean, it's an idea right now. I don't think it would be any sooner than next summer that there would be an actual end of the use for adult education, but it could be even later than that. It depends upon as we get into the details and time and factors. But again, we need to know if there's, if there's interest, if there's a desire to see a food court there, and all of the ambiance and environment that Mr. Sullivan has mentioned, that's what we need to know.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, so master, master lease, are we talking about then subleases beyond that for each of the?
Correct. So our, our vision would be to create a master lease as us as the development entity would come in, we'd master lease it with the town, and then we would create, we would sublet the space to individual vendors. However, there would be shared common services amongst those vendors.
Right.
So for instance, we would have janitorial services, et cetera, that are shared amongst all the tenant, the sub-tenants.
Okay.
And then each sub-tenant would, would pay a certain sublease fee.
Do you, do you have an idea of how many sub-tenants?
Well, it depends, it depends a little bit on the space that they require. So we have some sublease tenants for the, for the food vendor space that need a smaller amount of square footage than, than some others. We're estimating there would be six to eight vendors on the first floor. And then the way we're envisioning the second floor space right now would be a tasting bar concept where we would have multiple entities that are selling their wares through that, that tasting bars under a single license, a beverage service license. And that would allow us to have multiple tenants or multiple sublease tenants in that sense, in that same shared space. So for instance, if you had a, say, a vineyard, a distillery, and a brewery, all that wanted to be part of this, they would all pay a fee to have their, their wares in that, in that space, and, you know, we would share obviously the services of a bartender, whoever's gonna be serving those things.
Well, you may have solved one of my biggest problems, which is when my kids don't agree what they want to eat.
There you go.
I can just go to one place.
Absolutely.
So for that, I'm kind of excited. We'll see. I, I understand the blank space, white shell, vanilla shell thing is standard landlord kind of responsibility and duties for, for everybody else that might be curious. I was also, I'm curious about best, best-case timeline. So we talked about the Board of Ed's current use. I was guessing the same as the mayor stated. Does that seem to be fair?
Yeah, I mean, ideally, we'd like to, you know, we'd love to get it started for sometime around this time next year.
Yeah.
But realistically, we can be flexible based on the needs of the town to a degree. I mean, I think if, you know, if it's gonna take time to figure out what to do with the adult ed program, you know, I think that within reason, this can be a flexible timeline. I say that confidently because we've had so much overwhelming interest from people that are interested in being a part of this, and I think that it's a very sustainable and adaptable use. Given the nature of what we're proposing here, as taste change or business interest change on that first floor space especially, those different types of entities can be changed out as, as people's tastes change or as needs change. And I think that that's why this concept has been so successful in other markets because of that.
You mentioned there's a lot of interest. Do you have people that have expressed interest already?
We do. I wouldn't, at this point, I don't think it would be fair to publicly state specifics. I, I will tell you a couple interesting ones. We have one guy that wants to do a steamed, a steamed baked potato bar, which is a very hot concept. We have a place that does chopped, hand-chopped salads. We have an artisanal dairy barn provider. We have, so we have, we have some very interesting, unique food options. In fact, we've probably got interest from over fifteen.
Oh, wow.
Different groups that are interested. So we'll, we'll have more people interested than we'll have space for, so we'll, we'll be cherry-picking the cream of the crop, so.
And then how long do you plan these subleases to be for? Are you, you start them out at six months, you go twelve, three years?
I think we would, we would probably plan at least, you know, a year or preferably two years, you know, per, for a sublease tenant, but with renewal ability. For the most part, we want our tenants, obviously, it's just in any business, to be successful with what they're doing. But we want them to have a degree of flexibility. I think one of the things that is important to recognize here is, this is also an opportunity for some businesses that otherwise would not have the ability to stand up a brick-and-mortar restaurant in a, a space in a downtown area, in Wallingford or any other location. Because obviously, it's very expensive to do so, you have to have enough staff, and we've had businesses in the area that have had challenges with that, with staffing since the pandemic. This solves that because we can share that staff. So we have shared janitorial staff, shared waitstaff, for instance. And then they can run their food service operations in an environment where you're gonna have a tremendous amount of foot traffic and tremendous amount of interest in people coming there. And like you said, you know, you might have somebody that wants a hamburger, and somebody that wants, you know, some type of an Asian fusion or whatever happens.
Baked potato, right.
Exactly. You know, and they can all do that and sit in one common space and enjoy that meal together without having to, you know, try and figure out where we're going, what are we doing? And I think that overall is why this is a good concept from a high level, that seems to catch on quickly in every market that we've studied that it's been tried in.
The other markets that you, you mentioned as examples?
Sure.
Do you or your company or your partners have involvement in those?
No, no financial interest, but we've explored them, we've spoken to some of the purveyors there, and these range in size. I mean, there are towns smaller than Wallingford that have done this and done it very successfully. There's towns with a similar size to Wallingford, Concord, New Hampshire, I think it's a great, a great analogy to us. They're very similar and make up, you know, small city. I mean, we're not a city, but we have the population to be. And I think that, you know, it speaks to that New England kind of atmosphere to have these, these kinds of things. Especially with, you know, with Chokey here and the fact that we have so many resources in town, our, our central location in the state, you've got rail access, we have, you know, we're halfway between New Haven and Hartford. I mean, Wallingford is a very unique destination, you know, one, I personally feel it's a great town. And I think that this could be a, a real attractive thing for the town to stimulate interest beyond this project. I think we'll, we'll attract people to the town that will come here to experience this, and then they're gonna look around and see all the wonderful, wonderful things that we have, and, and really start to experience Wallingford more.
Which perfectly segues to what may be my last question, more for the EDC. So your, Mr. Sullivan was talking about the, the demographics that write for Wallingford show is probably a big help to keep those restaurants floating and moving, at least in the introduction, as they settle. Is there a plan to, to make this kind of a hub to development that would attract a certain type of business that you can or cannot share, that, well, here's a place for their staffs to eat? You know, when you go to a hospital in New Haven, there's a court of food trucks, or, you know, similar situation like that. Is, are we at that level with the EDC, or no, we're just focused on the train station right now?
Right now, we're just talking about the train station, but really, that whole area, I mean, we've been talking about the incentive housing zone. I think housing is definitely a big issue, and that could definitely help in that area with redoing the train station and having this project to be able to kind of get some more investment, private investment in that area.
I'm all set for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, mister. Thank you. I like a lot of what I'm hearing, but at the same time, I'm a little confused by how we got here. And I was gonna share my, my feelings overall. I remember back when we were talking about this grant, the focus was on making sure that there was a, a historically correct renovation of the building as step one. And then we were talking about what might be a usage for the building. So as, I don't recall authorizing an RFP for a potential developer. And so as we were, as we've been moving along, I know other counselors have expressed their own feelings. I've made clear my own wishes for what I'd like to see happen with this building. So I like what I'm hearing. I'm in an interesting situation where I like what I'm hearing, but I'm not sure I'm comfortable how we got here yet because we had nothing to say about it. What I was hoping we would see was an opportunity to have a discussion with the EDC. For starters, and nobody's offended by this, but I wasn't totally comfortable with the EDC running the whole ball anyway. This is a town building, and I like what you've been talking about and doing, but I, I totally expected the council to be involved in the discussions from, throughout. So I thought there'd be an opportunity to have a discussion about what potential uses we might be seeking, a discussion about what type of RFP would go out, and so on. My wishes, I mean, I was very hesitant, and I wasn't in favor of a, a single-tenant-type use, renting it out, you know, to a restaurant or one brewery. And I wanted to see, I, I've always continued to use the term of miniature version of a Quincy Market type of thing. I wanted to see, if possible, kiosks, potential arts, food, et cetera, et cetera. So when you're bringing up what you're talking about, that's attractive to me. So, but I was hoping that we would have more of a discussion about that. And, and then we would seek out at some point, once we decided what we were going to do with the renovation of the building, potentially issue an RFP and bring in ideas from businesses. And so I would, I would just question, or my question, one question would be, where did we get you? No, I'm sorry to put it that way. So to the EDC, where did we, how did we bring this business to the table? So that it's now presented to us, and it would have been nice to have been given a presentation of, hey, there's some ideas, give me something in writing. I mean, you're on the agenda, and there's no backup, so it's kind of a surprise, albeit a pleasant one to a certain extent because I like what you're saying. But how we got here concerns me. I have, I have backup music. So when the mayor says, we're just tossing out an idea here, I appreciate that. But are we, are we bypassing a requirement that we, as a council, issue an RFP? Or are you bringing us an RFP that you already did for us to accept? If you're bringing us an idea, you're also bringing us an idea from someone who's ready to do it. So that, to me, that says, I'm, I'm gonna throw it all out there, and I'm sure you'll have, you'll be able to answer all this. You're bringing us somebody who would, we would sign a contract with to do this, that we haven't issued an RFP to. Again, and I like what he has to say, so, so logistically, I just wanna make sure we're, we're following a path that would be appropriate. At some point, we would need to see more of a plan, more of an idea, is this is what, you know, if, if, is this what we wanna do? And are we already going to be signing on to somebody with whom we will then start working out the details? As opposed to throwing out all of our wishes and seeing who comes to the, to the, to the table with a bunch of ideas? Because there are so many questions that arise, and I threw a bunch of ideas out publicly at some point, and, you know, some, what do we do about crossing- we do about crossing the train tracks? You know, it may seem necessarily not like a big deal, but it is. Parking's on one side. Have we talked about how to, you know, provide for safe crossing of the tracks? And all that that might entail? And all sorts of things that could entail. Throw it out, tunnels, bridges, all sorts of things, right? But that's why I thought we would get together and have that big brainstorming session where we'd throw everything out there. So that's why I would appreciate an explanation as to how we got here from where we were four to five months ago. And I will end, and again, I like the concept. I love the concept. It's what I've been speaking about. So I'm good with the concept in general. There's a lot of details to work out. But I will end with this. I would never, I will not approve moving forward until we have a concrete answer to where adult ed is going. I will not. So that's not something we will just take up as it comes. We need that answered. We need that solved. And I leave that to whoever the administration is and the new council is and the new board is. I like the idea that we're looking at this now. I respect the work that's gone into it, but I don't want us getting ahead of ourselves because we need an answer for what happens with adult ed. And frankly, I want, as befits my responsibility and all my colleagues' responsibilities, to have a say in what's done here as opposed to just signing off on something. So I appreciate the time and I think I've made my points. Thank you.
Counselor Fishby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've been up here 14 years now. And time and time again, I find myself appreciating Counselor Testa. I think you said everything that, all the points, I'm going to drill down a little bit further, but I really very much appreciate all of that. Process is important. You know, I reflect back upon the American Legion building. You know, as some of us will recall during that process, we recognized that we had a property owned by the town. And we said, well, what is, give us some ideas, what are you going to do with it? Some of us remember, you know, one of the ideas is put a bar in there, right? Another was residential and we had these other things and came down to two on the last night. I think they were both residential at the very end, if I recall correctly. It's not what we see here. Mayor said, we're here to see what ideas there are. It's not what we're hearing tonight. We're hearing about an idea. And I like the vision. I like the, you know, the general concept, but is it fair to the public? Is it fair to private commercial development? You know, when, I know there's been meetings, I read these EDC minutes, I know there's been presentations about this, but we've been kept in the dark. It's not what the process is supposed to be. I mean, they're supposed to be part of the process. I too am concerned about the Board of Ed and adult education. It's very important. We have to figure out where that's going to go. I know that when Celebrate Wallingford was downtown, Amtrak was concerned about the amount of traffic, pedestrian traffic going over their tracks. As some of us will recall, there were booths on both sides of the tracks. And they actually had a police officer there. So, I mean, how does Amtrak feel? Because we know what the parking is like down there, right? Most of the parking is going to gravitate to Brothers. There's some on-street parking, you know, a lot of that's going to be used during the day certainly by businesses down there. I mean, there's not many spots that are open down there now. So that leaves the Brothers parking lot. That leaves, and I would hope for great success, right? And I would hope that a lot of people would want to come to this facility, but then I've got a lot of people crossing the tracks. You know, I've been to Parkville Market. It's great. You know, I took pictures, I brought them home, I said to my wife, you know, we should be doing this in town. There's no tracks there. I talked to the owner. I talked to him about how he got there. You know, once again, thank you to Counselor Testa. I look forward to an RFP going out and seeing what ideas come back and then we talk about it in the future. That's where I'm at on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll start with what I see as the smaller item. It's a safety issue and the other counselors have brought it up. It's the crossing of the tracks. But I mean, I've been crossing those tracks since I was 10 years old. Once my parents let me go downtown and I could actually get up to the movie theater and everything uptown, living on South Cherry Street. The safety level of the gate crossings there are far improved from what I remember as a kid. There's actually, the gates come down across the sidewalk elements. So when the train is coming, you can't even cross on the pedestrian pathway. They are both correct, both Counselor Testa and Counselor Fishby, that, you know, when you increase that volume there, you're going to have additional elements to consider. But I think with the improvements that are already there and maybe additional safety elements that could be considered, I think you can make for a better backing of any security, safety concerns that might be there. My question really was, it's kind of an aside to the project that you're bringing, and maybe it's an add-on, it's a food for thought thing. You've indicated that you've actually technically got more tenants than you do space in that building. Given that, have you given any consideration to adjacent buildings or other buildings? And the reason I mention it is we've already got a couple of other spaces up Center Street and onto North Main that already do this. They've already, almost like a sublease type environment that's already existing. So I'm thinking if you've got this nucleus center to set up and you've already got potential overflow, that you might also consider looking at space around it. And I think that some of these elements feed others. So if you, one of the issues that you outlined is being able to have enough employees. You know, you're setting up the design for these to be one and two-person shops, but if they expand beyond that, or if they're a little bit bigger, if you kind of couple everything else with the incentive housing zone and you bring in developers to build in the area on top of it, you're creating a positive cycle. Has any thought been given to, I understand that this is a start point, but maybe anything going forward?
Absolutely. And in fact, I would be the first to say that I think that's one of the goals of my involvement in this, is to see it blossom into development opportunities beyond just the train station. This is a gateway project. This is something that allows there to be more interest in developing that area. I'm one of the people that's looking to develop down there and one of my other colleagues that's involved in doing this is also like-minded and looking to develop other sites in the vicinity. And yes, that overflow actually has the potential to help feed not only projects that I might be involved in, but other entrepreneurs or business owners in the area that may have relationships with these.
Stay on.
Sorry. I apologize. I should get close to the mic. So, no, I was just saying that, you know, that spillover effect I think is very much desired. And really, the goal would be to work with the council and EDC to help bridge that gap and bring those potential tenants that might not be the right fit for this or not have the space to fit into this if it was the project that's pursued, that could spill over into these other locations that are being developed or existing spaces that are seeking tenants.
That's great to hear. And I would have taken a guess that you were looking beyond it because I think, I think there's a lot of opportunity here. I mean, I think one of the reasons that we've got, the only way I can phrase it is a failure to launch in here like with the incentive housing owners is there's not enough properties put together that any one developer can do anything with. But if we've got a group of different developers and business interests that are getting together on this, you can start to bring together an overall plan that if we can consolidate a couple of parcels here and if we can do this there, that we can grow into some other element and actually take advantage of the incentive housing, which is, that whole zone has been set up so that we can put in more density, more housing. And I think it also gives us an opportunity to even say, look, if we're going to, let's really stretch here. Can we get some affordable units in as part of that project? And see whether or not we can make that fit. I think the biggest disappointment that I have more in recent time with having affordable housing units was the debacle that we had over at the Old Simpson School property. We had units there and we let them go by exception and I was real disappointed when that happened. And to try to come up with going from this nucleus-type plan and something bigger, to try to figure out, how do we, let's reach for the sky. Let's try to solve every problem we can. If we miss a couple, okay, fine, we couldn't get them all, but put everything on the table and try to figure out if there's ways to jigsaw it in. You want to see this type of thing flourish and I think you get it by bringing everybody in.
I agree 100%. And I can speak for myself as a developer, that a project like this makes developing housing, especially housing that would include an affordable component, much more attractive if you have a project like this in the area that provides a draw. And collectively, between what's happening on essentially both Quinnipiac and Hall Avenue and the redevelopment projects that are being considered on flanking this, this would certainly make that much more attractive and easier to develop.
And I appreciate that. And I'll finish up one final thing. I think the other element that you want to tie into is the new train platform, the new train station. And the only reason I bring that up, if anybody's ever been down the South Norwalk, they know that whole area blew up when they really started to refurbish everything in that lower area, right off of the South Norwalk train station area. And I think we were sitting here with this potential and we're just like in a weight cycle.
And you need a link. The way I see it, again, speaking as a developer, looking at other projects, not just this, you need a link to provide that draw with the train station where it is, to get people to have a reason to walk from the train station to something a little closer than the rest of downtown. And this type of project could be that link. So people would take the train to Wallingford, go visit this, you know, food hall concept and then continue to walk up the street, visit shops, other restaurants and different things in the area. And I think that provides that link to really make it a walkable community. And there's no reason that Wallingford can't be very similar to what's been done in West Hartford and Greenwich and other towns that have, you know, these walkable main street downtown areas that have become very, very vibrant. And, you know, I really see that as a potential for us here.
I think you could take it a step further. I mean, I would walk. I know there's plenty of people that wouldn't. Get a little trolley that goes up and down North Cherry Street or you make them go out on Route 5 if you don't want to deal with North Cherry Street. The trolley would just ferry them back and forth to that hub. And if they want to walk up Center, they can. And if they want to get back to the train platform, they could walk back or take the trolley. You put it on some sort of regular schedule at, you know, at peak times and it just feeds into itself.
100% agree.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So this is, let me preface my comments by saying this is an exciting project. We've been looking for something to do with the train station since, you know, I've been on the council. So, but I do have a couple of questions about how we got to this space. So Silver Petricelli, Dave, is working on behalf of the contractor or on behalf of the town at this point?
On behalf of the town.
And so what has been expended so far on the town side and from where for your work?
So our work is the schematic design work that was part of the original RFP, which included us to provide a conceptual idea of adapting it for some type of tenant fit out.
Okay, so that was what we had talked, the RFP that we, before we went for the, applied for the grant?
Correct. And the assistance of the grant component that was completed at that time.
Okay, okay, perfect. So I know there's been some concern about adult education. I'm certain that we can find them a location, you know, somewhere downtown or somewhere else. Because adult ed has been in the center of town for a very long time. I think they were, I was on the Board of Ed when they moved to that location. So that's, I don't know, maybe eight or 10 years ago. So I'm certain somewhere else could be located. But if, I guess what would be the next steps if the council was interested? Obviously, this is just a presentation, right? So what would be the next steps to move forward with this project?
Well, certainly, you know, notwithstanding any considerations for adult ed or other things that would have to happen, from our perspective, it would be a matter of coming to an agreement on a master lease and then determining what the development plan for the renovation of the building would look like, what our component would be, how that would fit in with the renovations that the town is going to undertake. And in terms of timeframe, you know, we'd anticipate at this point, just in terms of the logistics, I mean, we're probably at least, you know, eight months to a year out from being able to stand all this up. But once the decision's made to move forward with this project, then we can start laying the groundwork for that and put things in place to make that happen rather quickly.
So when you say master lease, so the town still owns the building, you're the less C and then you would sublet the interior. So the town would still be responsible for the maintenance of the exterior of the building, presumably?
Correct. The preventive maintenance on the exterior of the building would still be the town's responsibility. But like any other triple net lease, we would be responsible for the interior space in the area that's being used by the tenants.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
You know, there are questions from counselors? Oh, Counselor Fishby, I'm sorry.
My late hand, so thank you. Sir, I'm just trying, what business are you representing here tonight?
Well, I mean, I'm representing myself as a developer. There are other people that are interested in pursuing this project that have other development interests in town. I wouldn't really want to name them specifically because they're not here to represent themselves. But for instance, we have, you know, other developers in the immediate vicinity in the incentive housing overlay zone that are pursuing projects there, people that own property that are.
So why, I mean, why do we need you? What's your part of this?
Well, I mean, I'm proposing to pull together, obviously, it takes a good deal of coordination to pull a project like this together from the business side. I'm just proposing to help coordinate that in conjunction with some of the other local business owners that are involved. My overall interest, though, is as a developer in the area to come in and say, I'd like to see a project like this happen. So I'm not here to essentially, specifically, you know, talk about how the structure of it's going to be at this point. We're really trying to present a concept to say, I think this is a very needed use, a very valid use. And I'd certainly like to lend my development capabilities to helping stand this up, but in conjunction with the town, not certainly at odds with it, I think.
When you reference "we," you're coming away from the "I," right? So who's, I mean, are you saying, do you represent developers that?
No, I represent, I mean, myself. I'm part of the development team. I'm just saying that there are other people that are interested in being a part of this project. I think it would be inappropriate for me to name them because we haven't discussed specifically, you know, naming them. At this point, this is really more just a concept discussion. I'm sure they'd be happy to, you know, come forward in terms of introducing themselves to this project if it's got interest from the council. But I think at this point, we're just kind of exploring an idea to see if there's interest.
And I understand, I just, you know, I looked up your name on Linkin, for instance, and you're involved with Turnkey Senior Living.
That's, it's a business entity that I have. We develop, you know, assisted living and senior living sites. I've done some projects in Oxford, Simsbury, other localities. But I'm also involved in a company called North Star, which is here in town, which is a developer and a general contractor. I'm a serial entrepreneur. I've done a lot of different things. I'm developing a project up in Glassonberry currently with a different development group to convert 1920s post and beam cigar factory to a luxury apartment community. So I've done, you know, quite a few different things.
Yeah, it looks like your background is like in the senior living.
Senior living is my primary wheelhouse, but I've done other types of development as well.
Yeah, so I'm still wrestling with, you know, what is wrong with putting this out to RFP to see what those potential developers that are out there.
I'm not necessarily arguing against that. I'm here to present a use, to say that it's a, I think, a valid and needed use. And as a person that has development interest in the area, I'm very interested in seeing a project like this move forward.
Apparently, the mic's not picking you up.
Oh, I am sorry. There you go. Hopefully, that's a little better. I was just saying that, you know, my primary interest is a developer that's interested in seeing things move forward. that's interested in seeing things move forward in the town, um, and I think this is a very valid use and a use that could be extremely beneficial, um, for the town and for the other development projects that I know myself and other people, um, are pursuing. Um, I'd like to see this use happen. Um, eh, to that effect, um, you know, I would like to, uh, try and help to be a part of making that happen, um, but I'm not opposed to, you know, anyone's suggestion to, uh, uh, you know, look at, uh, alternative providers. I, I'm, I mean, this is a, this is a concept I feel, I feel very strongly about, but, um, you know.
And sort of what's being presented to us is the concept of basically a, a marriage of sorts. And, you know, part of my vetting is, you know, am I open to this particular relationship that is the only one being presented to us? So that's, that's part of my vetting process here. No, I appreciate it, because you live in town, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, you're a resident, so there's a role of saying, hey, this would be great for our town as a resident, and then there's a role of, I wanna be, you know, front and center and part of this project as being the partner, and I, and I respect both roles, and that's part of my analysis, because that's all that's before us. But, um, you know, I look forward to the train station being a, you know, vibrant part of our downtown. How we get there, um, is yet to be seen, so I thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, you know, my earliest comment was about adult ed, but I will join the group who've said that, um, this is certainly something that I'm interested in seeing happen. I think it, uh, would certainly revitalize that building and re- revitalize the surrounding uses and, um, certainly help with overall development in that neighborhood. I think it's a, it's a wonderful proposal. Uh, with that, comments, questions from the public? Mr. Ross?
My name is Ray Ross, 656 Center Street, Wallingford, and I'm a member of the Board of Education, but I'm speaking as a private citizen. What's, what's going on in the basement of this building? I know currently there's a model train thing in there. Is that staying, or are you moving that out, or what?
Um, we have talked to the, uh, the Model Railroad, uh, Association, and, uh, in this plan, we would keep them in the basement.
Has anybody been down there looking at it? It appears to me it's a storehouse. Last time I was there, a couple of years ago, you couldn't even see tracks, so I'm just wondering if, is that's the best use for that?
They, they do still meet, uh, monthly, um, on Fridays. Uh, I think it's the second Friday of the month, um, but they are still active.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mira, thank you.
Good evening, Joe Mira from Economic Development Commission. Uh, first of all, as far as, uh, Mr. Sullivan's LinkedIn page, he's got two of them. One is for the one business, the other one's for his, uh, construction business or development business. Um, as for the safety, uh, there has been talk about the Amtrak gates. Um, we're sure this is not a unique situation to Amtrak, and I'm guessing that they must have some type of electronic gates that they could put up at those intersections, and we will explore that as we get into the, uh, workings of this project. Uh, the school system, the, uh, adult ed, uh, just to give you some background, uh, from day one in the conception of this project, uh, Tim Ryan, uh, had, 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 uh, very active, uh, conversations with the super, the prior superintendent, uh, so much so that he even was looking at different sites. So our interest is to keep the adult ed whole and in a safe and, uh, convenient environment. Uh, when Tim left, I had also had, uh, conversations with the current superintendent, and, uh, the conversations, uh, were such that, uh, were similar to the one that, uh, Dawn had, uh, I believe today or yesterday, uh, where she just wanted to be kept up to date, which we have been doing right along. I know we've all received an email from another party in the school system, for whatever reason, she wasn't part of the conversations we were having with the superintendent or the executives at the adult ed. Uh, how did we get here? Real simple, real confusing. Uh, we started out looking to put an RFP together. I, and this is when I was filling in, and we started reaching out to commercial realtors, uh, whatever developers we could find, uh, they weren't interested. We had one person that was, we had two meetings with him, it's just that it, this wasn't a space that was viable for, for any project. Uh, so where did, uh, Mr. Sullivan come from? As he's alluded to, and I guess we can't really go into particulars right now, but if this project moves forward, by the next time we're in front of you, you'll have names, you'll have figures, you'll have addresses, you'll have the details that will make you, uh, will make you as pleased with this project as we are. Um, and we don't expect anything short of you wanting to know all that. Um, how did we get here? Uh, one of the neighboring, uh, property owners who's looking to develop that area, uh, came to us as an EDC talking, and he was concerned about the railroad station, and I told him that we were doing this, and he brought up an art center. So I went down to Milford to see what they did with their tra- train station as an art center. Economically, it was a disaster, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, it wasn't cost-effective, uh, the town would lose money, and we wouldn't have the money to do, and they, anyway, it wasn't a viable proj- project in my eyes. Uh, from there, uh, John was part of another, uh, group looking at, uh, uh, property down in that area for development, and, you know, they're soon to be closing on it. Uh, um, and we started talking, and those two per- people started talking, and, uh, we continued the conversation because we thought it was a, a real natural that we would have neighboring property owners who had, actually had skin in the game, rather than just a, a developer coming in to throw a project at us and move out with or more than lose a draw. Uh, these are people that will be neighbors of this train station, so this is how we got here. And again, uh, what we're looking tonight is just really the concept. If you're interested, if you want us to go forward, fine. If not, as I've always said, I'm a big boy, I can move on. And I thank you for your time.
Evening, Jason Michael, 81 Meadow Street. Um, I, I realize that, you know, that, the, we're in a conceptual arena with this, so, um, I, I'd just like to compliment the council with the, the, the trepidation they've shown in their tenor as a group. This is a big, it's a big deal. Um, and I would hope that going forward, whether with Mr. Sullivan's group or, or any other group or an RFP, that, that everybody keeps in mind that we're talking about, while a 10-year period or 15-year period or five-year period, we're still talking about privatizing a public building. And I would hope that the public is involved every step of the way. I mean, as we move forward, if it is with a group or, or even to decide what the project would be or what the building will, how the building would end up, I would hope that the, the engagement is, um, I would hope that the engagement is, is prioritized with, with the people who, who technically own the building. Thanks.
Bruce Conroy, 13 Burke Heights Drive, a little shorter than him. Um, so, it's a sad fact, I know. Um, I know how you got here, and I think it's a great idea, and it's a great plan, and it's a great concept. Um, but I don't see how you can, and I do this for a living, renovate that building without removing all the tenants. The building is in very bad shape, outside and inside. So I just wanna, you know, that's a big part of the cost analysis, was it gonna cost the town, because we're, we're gonna be on the hook for that part of it. And to do it right, especially with the mechanicals, which are gonna, I imagine, be in a basement, some of them, some won't be outside. Um, there's not a lot of room in the basement, efficiently used room in the basement, unless you count the stairs and the door and the stairs. Um, I just, I just wanna make, everybody needs to understand, it's, it's a, it'll be a big cost, because right now, the repairs that have been done on it are substandard and falling apart. I just wanna make sure that everybody understands how much the town is gonna have to probably pay, which we're gonna have to do. And, uh, I love the, I love the concept, by the way, Mr. Sullivan, it is a great one. That's it.
Anyone else? Can I bring it back to the council? Uh, Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you. Uh, so going back to, I guess, the, the main question, concept, I like it. Um, I, I look forward, I, you know, I think we go forward with an RFP type of thing, and this is part of it, um, but this is the type of thing that interests me, uh, and if there are any competing concepts or ideas, then I'm excited to hear about those too, but I know that if we, at least we have this one, this is something that we've talked about in some capacity up here already, um, in some side of, in some sort of visionary or dream state, so that's my feedback, as requested.
Counselor Testa?
Thank you. Um, in response to Mr. Mira's comments, and I appreciate what you have to say, Joe, um, I would just say procedurally, we're in a weird place right now because there's no action item on the agenda. So as you said, if we wanna go forward with this, fine, if not, you're a big boy, but we're not in a position to say, stop, but we're not in a position to say, go, um, because there's no, there's no action being asked by, uh, for the council to take. Sorry about that grammar. Um, I would simply ask, as I might have said earlier, um, bit of a surprise tonight. So it would've been, it would've been nice to have a nice, old-fashioned little pamphlet. This is what we've been talking about, this is what we're thinking of doing, this is what we're going to be talking about on Tuesday night, and, uh, this is how we got here, and this is what we are envisioning as a path forward, and somewhere along that way, there will be decisions that have to be made by the council, um, so that we're just in a position to not just sit here and say, yeah, that looks really good, but we can all say, I love this idea. It means nothing, it carries no weight, it doesn't give anyone the authority to keep going. So, um, if the plan tonight was to update us on what you've been doing, then, um, you know, well done. Um, but we need, we do need some type of plan and some type of, um, idea of where we're gonna, where you would like us to go, where the administration would like to go, and what we may be, what we're going to be asked to approve at some point. Um, so that's the food for thought I'm throwing out there at this point. Thank you.
Clearly, you're here taking our temperature.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, there's concern about how we got here. I think we now understand how we got here, and I think by and large, those who have spoken up here have said that the concept is something that we're certainly interested in pursuing.
Counselor Fishburne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just wanna, Mr. Stein, hi, Dave, nice to see you again. Always great to see you.
Yes, thank you.
Um, I'm just trying to, your, your role in this wa- was, is to advise through your professional skills how to get this property to a state that is rentable. Is that fair?
Yes.
And have you completed those recommendations?
We, um, our original schematic design presented a concept, in that case, of multiple, of essentially a multiple-tenant scenario. Um, in that, it really does align with a single-tenant scenario. So, um, in our original plan, we showed a potential mixed use of whether it could be office or can be, in this case, restaurant, um, which then allows that interior space to be adaptable to either a single-tenant or multi-tenant. So, yes, our original concept contemplated that, which, which did result in removing the stair, upgrading the interior, renovating the exterior of the building, and even in this concept, from the historical perspective that was asked earlier, the integrity of that would still remain the same. There would be no alterations other than just physical improvements to the aesthetics of the building. Um, that would be part of this overall piece. So our, our original responsibility was to evaluate the overall conditions of the building, which we did as part of our original report, and then also outline a overall concept. And in that concept, we showed a multi-tenant scenario. In this case, it's sort of a lighter use because of just the single-tenant and the nature of those being smaller kiosks, which essentially would result in less improvements to the overall infrastructure, whether it be electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and so forth, because these smaller kiosks would operate off of just basically a le- lesser demand or capacity.
So, uh, the gentleman had talked about a, a white space.
Yes.
And it appears that you're, you're past the white space in your conceptuals, right? So I just wanna pull you back to white space, because it was my, my understanding, right? There's obviously problems with the building, and it's not rentable in its current, right? So we wanna get it to a state that we could show it to potential developers and then go from there, right? So what I'm, what I'm interested in, because I wanna move forward, right? I don't wanna be here two years from now talking about this. What's it gonna get? Do you know what it would cost to get this to a white space stage? Never mind conceptuals and all that stuff, so that we can then say to the general public, what will you do with this space? You know what that would cost?
So our original, without, without just pulling a specific number out, our original concept essentially had that. We actually took it to a further step of providing fit and finish in those, in those areas. This concept shows to create it to a white box, and then the developer would then take it, or the tenant would then take it and do that fit and finish. So the amount of infrastructure that would need to be invested in this is less than what we originally projected, because we were, for example, we were calling to remove all the mechanicals and all the electrical and create a separate zone for each of those. In this case, that's not necessary. We do not need the sub-meter, for example, the electrical panels, because it's a single-tenant, and the developer would, would consolidate that all, and it wouldn't be separate metered. So the costs that we presented before were broken down in a way we have evaluated, and it'd be, it would, it'd be less expensive than what we were originally projecting, um, with that, because again, we're not fit and finishing the original, our original concept.
So generally, do you know what that number is?
The number that we had was about $1.5 million, $1.4 million, which included a restoration of the exterior work, facade work to the brick, masonry, and so forth, facias and such. Um, and then ma- majority of that is the removal of that scissors stair that is in the center with some structural rework that's needed to sort of rectify that, and then the, the restrooms, accessibility improvements to the entry of the building, and that is basically taking it to the white box, where we projected about a 1.4, you know, 1.4, 1.5 million dollar budget.
What, why, you know, white space, let's just say adult ed was relocated, right? And let's just say the train group is relocated, you have a vacant building, white space. Demo of the bathrooms. You don't need a bathroom in a building that nobody is operating in, right? And then you say to the- And then you say to the general public, "What would you like to do with this building?" And they can put in the bathroom, right? So, you know, because maybe where we put the bathroom doesn't work with what they wanna do inside the building, or that, you know, that constrains them, right? So, I, I'm looking for just a, a room, right? That, and that's what I'd like to talk about, 'cause that's moving forward, right? That's, 'cause otherwise, we are gonna be walking in mud over this thing. So, with that in mind, a blank room. Where are, I mean, where are we on the number? One? Eight hundred?
It, it, the, the bathroom piece is a small component of it 'cause we are gutting the majority of that, that space to get it to that full raw, um, raw space. Um, probably only reducing it by, you know, seventy-five, you know, seventy-five thousand. It's really the, the fit out of the bathroom. And it's pretty traditional that a landlord provides that as a base, as a base service, and then the surrounding area. So, I'm not sure there's a considerable amount of savings that would come out of keeping it raw enough, but that could be a discussion point and sort of built into the overall concept. Um, with that. The majority of the work that you need to do is the, the work related to facade to, um, to improve that. Okay, that was a good portion of it, about a third of it. The next piece of it is the demolition of that stair, and then the restoration structurally of, now needs to take place to sort of fortify that open space that's there. You then need to sort of sever some of the services that are there and get those ready. They're sort of capped and ready to, ready to go on for a developer. So you just have to now make a decision on what's the best investment to do so the developer could come in and that handoff that was discussed earlier is easy, is easy to do. Um, so it's sort of a fine-tuned discussion that just needs to be determined as to, as to that handoff. But typically, the bathrooms are part and parcel of a tenant fit up. They don't have to be, but they, you know, it would, it would be better served to have that infrastructure already in place now.
Well, I mean, that's built to suit, right? So you can structure a lease in such a way that the, uh, the tenant is getting a credit against rent, you know, for having to put in the bathrooms, they get what they want, and, and all that stuff.
I, I, I agree with you. There's, there's multiple scenarios that can be discussed that benefits the town in terms of the landlord, landlord shell that's provided.
Okay, so I guess that's the first hurdle we have to get over, is, you know, 1.5 or thereabouts. Um, because that's at least the town's initial outlay. So I look forward to having that discussion and some sort of RFP process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa? Just have a quick question.
You, you did a pretty good review of this building. Is there, and or was there, a tunnel?
Yes, yes. There, um, there was, there was a tunnel. Um, it's, it's situated almost in the middle of the building. Um, when I originally looked at it, my first thought, it was a coal bin 'cause you constantly, you know, you see that of that era of the building. Um, but there is language that I did find in some of the historic data that, uh, that was used as transportation for cargo from one side to the other. They didn't cross the tracks. They somehow had a lift or something to, to get that down and go under. Right now, it only goes back six feet. I, you know, it's sort of dead-ended there. I'm not sure when that took, when that actually took place. It actually may have been somewhere earlier, um, in some of the narratives, but yes, there was a tunnel.
So it, 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 it ends before going under the tracks?
Yeah, it probably goes about five feet past the face of the building.
Is that a concept that could be, realistically?
Um, the...
I'm sorry, we're talking about, we're talking about crossing the tracks, and we're talking about everything. I'll be the knucklehead that says it. Could we build a tunnel, or could we build a bridge, or do we just have to do crosses, crossings?
I think, I think to make it clear, and the town attorney is, it's railroad property.
Right.
And we cannot use it in any way. Our property ends at the wall, the wall of the building. Anything beyond that is railroad property.
I wasn't gonna propose we tunnel under the tracks without telling Amtrak.
No, but, but, you know, but this...
We're here talking, so I, you know, when you're doing all your, I throw it all out there. I was just curious.
The, the tunnel extends beyond the back wall of the property. So whatever is on the other side, six feet, ten feet, whatever, is railroad property.
Thank you.
Counselor Tada?
Thank you. Thank you. So, all right, I don't wanna, I don't wanna drop the tunnel, 'cause I brought this up last time. So, if we went to Amtrak and asked them, I mean, maybe, maybe Amtrak would say "We'd rather people walk underneath than crossing the tracks." We don't know unless we ask them, right? So I, I don't think we eliminate this possibility. Maybe, maybe they'd be okay with it.
Mr. Chairman, our experience with Amtrak is no one deals with anything within the Amtrak right of way. I mean, they, they absolutely have barbed wire, in their minds, no one touches anything that intrudes upon the railroad right of way.
But we're crossing it, we're crossing there right of way. So if we're...
This extends underneath the platform, and ultimately, probably, what was shut off was the rest of that tunnel that would go underneath the tracks. Like I say, Amtrak, the owners of railroads will not allow any private party to deal with anything under, over, on their property, railroad property.
But we are, we are walking over it. So we have to, I mean, we're, we're either, we're either going to walk on it, or maybe walk under it. Either way, we're crossing their property. So I'm just, it might just be something to look into, that's all I'm saying. We may just wanna look into it. May, maybe as, from a liability aspect, they would say, "Yeah, the tunnel's still here and, and you, you can use it." Because they don't want people walking on the tracks as opposed to under. So I, I just think we, we maybe look into it, that's all.
I think that's all we have for you right now. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, counsel.
Onto item 11.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the revisions to the existing tax incentive programs as recommended by the EDC relating to personal property tax incentive for manufacturers, real property tax incentive for manufacturers, real property and tax incentive for office development, and the real property tax incentive for incentive housing zone.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Good evening, welcome back, Mr. Crouch. Your first night here and you're not leaving us.
I wanna get my money's worth.
Or ours.
All right. Just, uh, these are the, uh, four incentive programs that we have for renewal. Um, the EDC received input from the town assessor, the town planner, and Attorney Small. Um, Attorney Small clarified some of the language and created a standard application, because we didn't have a standard application, uh, in the process. So we figured it, might as well streamline the, the process while we're at it. Uh, personal property tax incentive for manufacturers was, uh, established in 1993. Uh, the real property tax incentive for manufacturers was 2005. The real property tax incentive for office development was 2005. And the real property tax incentive for the incentive housing zone was 2016. Um, so we just would like to renew the incentives and keep it as part of the EDC toolbox while we're talking to prospective businesses.
Thank you, Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening again. Um, a couple of questions and, and comments. Um, how, do we know how many of these have been taken advantage of in the past years?
Sure. Uh, the personal property tax incentive for manufacturers, we've had, uh, since 1993. At least the records through the assessor and EDC was sixteen applicants, of which thirteen qualified. So three of them didn't qualify because they didn't hit the, uh, net increase in the assessed value of 25,000 or more. Uh, and then this year, we've had two submitted for this one. Uh, the real property tax incentive for manufacturers, we had two approved. Um, the real property tax incentive for office development was one. And then, uh, the incentive housing zone, we have not had an application yet.
And do we, do we know how much this has cost us in those? It's okay if you don't have that, I'm just curious.
I do have some numbers. Um, so I didn't take into account inflation. Um, so these are just stand, uh, the numbers for, uh, the different programs. The assessment adjustment totals was 99 million. And I should clarify, there was, uh, in, as part of this number, there was another real property agreement for, um, Bristol Myers Squibb and the Courtyard by Marriott. So this is including the roughly 40 million dollars for those two. Uh, it was 99 million dollars in assessment adjustment totals. The cost, uh, to the town based on what the mill rate was for those years was about 2.6 million.
Thank you. So, my, um, well, I always wonder with, with tax abatements, you know, do, are we just giving money away? Would they have expanded anyway? Um, you know, would they have left? Like, is this keeping anybody? Is this retaining anybody or attracting anybody? Um, I don't know if you can speak to that, if it's anything that's quantifiable. Um, but that's always kind of a concern of mine, is are we just, would they have done that anyway? You know, when they're taking advantage of this program? Is there any, can you speak to that at all, or?
Um, since I've started on May 22nd of this year, I haven't had too much experience in the incentive programs. However, um, I have heard that, um, there are times where we don't bring up the incentives, nor do they ask for any, um, money back or tax abatement. Um, these are just some of the ones, uh, when we do talk to brokers, a lot of times they say, "Okay, what does Wallingford have, uh, for incentives?" Uh, some towns don't have any programs, they just kinda leave it blank. Um, so this definitely does help us when we're talking to, uh, new businesses and also businesses that are expanding.
Okay, thank you. I, I, um, I really like the retention credit. My, I always kind of, I kinda hate these tax abatements, um, just philosophically because I feel like, you know, you have a business that's here for, for 20 years or 30 years, and then, and they don't, you know, they're paying their taxes all this time, and then they don't get to take advantage of that. And then the new guy coming in gets, you know, gets all these tax credits, and I never liked the idea of that. Um, you know, and obviously, a, a tax credit for somebody is, is costing everybody else because they're not, you know, they're not paying their fair share, and then somebody else has to cover that. Um, so just as a whole, I'm typically not in favor of these. Um, however, when, um, I, I like the retention part of this. So it's, we're not just offering this to newcomers, there's also that retention piece. So somebody who's already an existing business wants to expand, um, we're offering programs for them. So, um, I'm, I'm still a little bit on the fence, just 'cause like I said, you know, philosophically, I'm, I kinda don't like these. And, and I think, as a whole, if we offer, um, you know, affordable taxes and, and our electric rates are low, and we offer all of that to everybody, then, you know, my feeling is that kind of should attract businesses just on its merits, on everything else that we're doing, um, without having to, to give extras. Um, however, like I said, I do like the retention piece of this. And I like that we're offering something to existing businesses to keep them here and to keep them happy too. Um, so those are, those are all my comments for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else in the council? Members of the public? All right, there being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Harmanji?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone? Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Cervone?
Yes. Success. Hopefully you'll come back soon. All right, next item, item 12, discussion and action regarding the cost of rebidding community pool. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I believe you have, uh, information, a letter from me, as well as, uh, information obtained by the purchasing office. Um, the rebidding would cost $69,000 approximately. Um, two components being, being confirmation codes haven't changed. And then, um, the assessment, the validation, the review of the bids to determine what would be the lowest responsible. Um, the other factor is to just get a cost estimate on the existing specs. Uh, would be $7,500. I was reluctant to go ahead under the guise that I, I believed that most of you probably felt it would cost us nothing just to rebid it, other than the cost of staff. That isn't the case. Uh, there is a financial impact for rebidding.
Counselor Marone?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I mean, this is discussion and possible action. So while I fully support the community pool project, I think that, you know, respectful to the, whoever the new mayor is gonna be, I don't know that this is the type of thing where it's even worth getting the bids at this point. 'Cause I would presume that there would be some sort of a plan, you know, as far as what, how we're gonna develop, uh, many of the needs in town, you know, going forward. So I, I think that it's sort of a disservice to whomever would be the new mayor to put this out to bid now and then sort of approach them, you know, on the, the day they take office with, "What are you gonna do about community pool?" You know, I think you would allow them, at this point, to sort of make their own plan and come up with, you know, develop their strategy as far as how we're gonna handle some of these items. So I'm not, um, I wouldn't vote yes to, you know, to expend the money to go to bid on this at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just out of curiosity, Counselor Marone, how about the, uh, cost estimate?
I think I'd be all set, holding off on all those.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm still, I'm still a little bit hung up on, um, the fact that we're not doing the portion that we voted, that the council voted for in favor of, which is, um, to have an RFP to see if we can salvage any of what's currently there. Um, we did vote that that would be part of it. It's not part of it. Um, I, I just, I still don't see the harm in just finding out, can we salvage any of this before we spend millions of dollars to completely tear down every aspect of it? Um, and like I said, we voted on that, and again, that's not part of this. Um, so I'm, I'm also leery to go forward without that being a part of it. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we talked about this last time, I thought part of the problem, uh, the consternation was that additional work would have to be done. And to try to alleviate that concern, we said just take the old documents and put them back out to bid, and let's see where we are. So now we've been forced into the position of having to do more work. I don't see what's wrong with just taking Counselor Tada's idea, merging it together with this, and, you know, seeing if they can do the same thing at the same time. Um, you know, this, what's before us indicates they're gonna have to go to the site. They're gonna perform an onsite review of the pool and park to verify conditions are substantially the same, so on and so forth. So, they're gonna have to do that anyway. I don't see why they couldn't potentially evaluate what's there and then, you know, perhaps close the loop on what Counselor Tada has suggested. So, um, I would certainly be open to that if my fellow counselors are. Um, I'm, I'm in support of moving, once again, ahead, looking in the rearview mirror. So I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, I'm just curious how we figure out how much that costs. I mean, one of the, the mayor's bringing this back to us, and Mayor, you can correct me if I'm mischaracterizing this, but, you know, we're at a point where it's not merely throwing the same bid documents out, the bid, bid documents. We have to pay to update them. If, if I'm being, if I'm oversummarizing what has to happen, you can tell me that. But you, you're not comfortable just going out and spending the money without talking to us first.
Well, I, as I indicated at the, at the meeting, I'd have to talk to purchasing office, and there needs to be a confirmation that the codes are correct. Otherwise, um, the potential is to get prices that are meaningless because if codes have changed, that changes design, and, uh, we're, we're, we're dealing with figures that aren't accurate. changed, that changes design, and we're dealing with figures that aren't accurate. So that's the recommendation, that we need to verify that codes are all valid in the specs that we have, which means a review of those specs.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I would expect that the progression here was, as a result of the last vote, Mr. Amadeo reached out and said, you know, "Can you collect that stuff? We'd like to put it out to bid," so on and so forth. The response is where we've ended up here today. So I would suggest, procedurally, if fellow counselors are open to it, if Mr. Amadeo reaches out to them and says, "Okay, you know, since you're going to go there anyway, you're redoing reports and stuff like that, how much would it cost us additionally to include a rehab of the current as part of this?" You know, because if it's only fifteen grand, I'm good.
Okay, but I think it's been stated multiple times in the past, the current pool does not meet codes. So when the current pool was reconditioned, I believe it was, special legislation was passed by the General Assembly, it doesn't meet public codes. So we're not under that umbrella. So no one is going to tell us that we can recondition the pool as it is out there, because it doesn't meet public health codes.
What portion, so, I mean, and I don't know a lot about this, but, you know, the plan that is before us removes the entirety of the pool, puts in a more conventional pool, adds a splash pad, so on and so forth. The alternative, as I conceptualize, would be still, you know, the zero-lip pool, walking in, in that huge size, no splash pad, replacing the pumps, because those are obsolete, you know, that's rehabbing the current. What portion is not to code? I mean, I know the bathrooms aren't to code.
The current pool does not meet public health codes. So at the point we're doing that kind of complete renovation, we would be obligated to meet public health codes. My belief is that it does not meet public health codes, it was under the umbrella of, when it was built, the General Assembly passed legislation that allowed it to be done that way.
So if we?
We'd probably need new legislation to allow us to not be complying with whatever the codes are now, which I'm sure are far different than when it was renovated before.
So I'm taking it like a nonconforming property. As long as you don't expand the nonconformity, and you rehab the existing, you are grandfathered in. I would expect that would be the case here. So resurfacing the pool would be rehabilitating the current, replacing the pumps, bringing them up to date is replacing the current, it's not expanding a problem. Are you saying that if we resurface the pool and expand the pumps and bring the bathrooms up to date, that there's a, there's some problem?
I think that is basically a rebuilding, that's, I don't believe you can do that under the code.
It's not a nonconforming use situation. I mean, I haven't looked at that legislation in a million years, but we, there was a special law passed, so we could, and I think it has to do with the fact that it starts off at zero, wasn't that, that's not, you're not allowed to do that. So that was a big deal to get permission to keep that. So, I mean, I'd have to pull the statute, I don't even know where it is. But it's not a nonconforming use situation, it's, we did not comply with the health code.
I'm just bringing, it's sort of akin to that, because if we had, let's just say that we had resurfaced the pool every year, and it was meticulous, my understanding is that that allowance had no way, shape, or form went away. It's because, and I'm not, I'm not casting aspersions here, because the pool has not been maintained all these years that we're in this situation, but that was not time limited.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there was a time limit on it, but there may have been a, I, you know what, I'd have to look it up, it's been.
So is it possible that we can go to these people and ask them that question? You know, they're the professionals, right? And then, you know, if they say you can't, you can't, got it. But if you can, how much would it be additional here? I mean, we're going to be here in another two weeks or so. I think that makes sense to me, but I defer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, just, it's not an issue of maintenance. If we were just going to do maintenance to the pool, we could do that. We are basically rebuilding the pool. You're crossing a line of everything being replaced that's of any substantive value. You know, we can ask a question, I'm not sure, we'll figure out who to ask the question of, but previously, as I stated, the General Assembly had to pass a law to allow this.
Counselor Tata?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Counselor Fishbein on this. I think the only, the only reason I keep bringing this up is because I, I just don't think we've, my understanding also was, if you're just renovating something, that's different than if you're replacing. And if you're replacing, obviously, you're held to all of the new codes and the new standards, but if you're simply fixing something, then you don't need to be held to those same standards. And the only reason I keep bringing it up is because I just, you know, we're going to be asked to vote on a several-million-dollar project and potentially bonding, and I just don't feel comfortable making that decision of spending that kind of taxpayer dollars without knowing definitively that we couldn't have done it for a much lower cost. So if this is going to go out for this, I think, you know, to issue an RFP or to ask this group, you know, just get a definitive answer once and for all. Is anything here salvageable? Can we just, you know, replace the pumps and fix the bathhouse and resurface, and maybe we can do it for, you know, a very affordable amount of money? And maybe we can't. Maybe, you know, nobody answers the RFP, or maybe they come back and they say, "You can't do that." But at least then we know. At least then we can move forward and know that there's no other option here, that we had to completely rip it out and do a complete rebuild. So I think that's just why we keep pushing for this, just to get a definitive answer once and for all. Thank you.
Just, I believe the answer would have to come from the regulatory agencies. They're the ones who would be telling us, "Cease and desist, you won't get permits," whatever is their regulatory authority. I'm not sure, you're talking about going to whoever might be working on it, they'd have an opinion, but ultimately, it would be Public Health Department and maybe others.
All right, nothing currently from the council, any questions, comments from the public?
Riley O'Connell, Ederton Road. I would favor the council, or certainly agree with the counselors, I would say this should go back out to bid. Obviously, we voted on this three, maybe four times at this point, and to the point that, yes, there obviously, one way or another, will be a new mayor, new administration coming up with decisions to make, no decisions can be made until we know what price tag we're dealing with here. And whoever comes into that administration next is when we thrust right into budget season. And this pool's already been closed for years. So I would strongly encourage you, regardless of, I mean, I do not necessarily agree, I actually disagree with the idea of an RFP for keeping the pool as is, only because we've heard it from when the pool subcommittee still existed, from all of them, unless they were wrong about that, that that wasn't possible, and now only more time has passed. We keep talking about the current pool not being up to code. Let's be clear, there is no current pool. You know, if you've all been to the site, it's not even a park at this point, which is a shame. So the sooner we can get a bid back out, the sooner we know what kind of cost we're potentially dealing with, and the sooner that we can start making decisions. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no other hands, Counselor Testa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if we don't make a motion and take action, nothing's going to happen, is that correct?
That's correct.
My understanding is there's interest in knowing what the code compliance issue might mean for the existing pool, and we can look to find an answer on that. I think that's what I'm hearing so far.
Well then, yeah, I'm, I'm okay waiting a couple of weeks to get that answer. I'm not in favor of a project which would just rebuild what was existing, but if my colleagues voted to ask for what the price on that would be, that's fine. My position has, I've made it very clear, I would like the project that we had approved to be rebid as it was approved. So if I understand the mayor's memo, we're being told it would cost about seventy thousand dollars to do that, correct? Okay. Doesn't sound like there's a lot of interest right now on the council to go ahead and authorize that. So if we wait a couple of weeks to get an answer on the issues that were brought up about the current design, I can, I can sit tight for a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein?
Yeah, I don't know that the two are inexplicably intertwined, though. I mean, I'd be interested to find out that information, but I'm also interested in finding out what the numbers are, because the practicality of the situation is that no matter what the number is, it's not happening during this administration. Because by the time the numbers come back, and the item is put out to bid, we're into January, right? So, and even if it comes back beforehand, and to say this mayor is supportive, the money is appropriated, that project could be put to a halt by the next administration. That being said, I might understand, Mr. Mayor, that, I mean, you're saying that there would have to be a reach out to health and building, I guess, right?
Yeah, at least, probably, it's the Public Health Department would be my guess, but I'll have to, I'll have to inquire as to what codes are of the primary ones to deal with the compliance.
And do you think that's doable in a two-week, two-to-three-week timeline?
I would think so. I mean, it's not a difficult question. We should be able to obtain an answer, unless, are you? Well, it's a question of someone being contacted at the state, but otherwise, I don't think it's a difficult question. We can certainly describe what the, what the zero depth and the various components of the existing pool, I think we have that, and we should be able to get an idea of the compliance. Certainly, if we could start with what law was passed, but, no, my expectation, I don't think it's a difficult question.
Okay, I think, I, okay, with that in mind, I might to understand that this item is going to be tabled for our next meeting, or is that?
It'll be put back on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tata?
Thank you. I just want to discuss, I think there's a third option here, but I want to make sure I'm understanding this properly. So based on Mr. Amadeo's memo dated September 15th, so it would be sixty-nine thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars to rebid the project. But then he says at the end of the letter, "TLB, who we're currently working with, can provide an updated construction cost estimate for seventy-five hundred dollars." So I don't understand that TLB is saying, they're not going to rebid it, but they, for seventy-five hundred dollars, they'll give us an estimate of what the current cost would be, is that correct?
That's the way I understand it, yep.
Okay, so.
But that would mean, that would mean that they're not, they're not indicating that the codes are correct?
Yep.
That's all.
Okay, because I think that, I mean, that might be a nice, you know, in my opinion, that might be a good, kind of a good compromise at this point. You know, maybe we find out about, you know, the renovations of the current one, as Mr. Mayor suggested, you know, they can look into that, and then for seventy-five hundred dollars, we get an updated construction cost, knowing that, you know, they're not taking into consideration, you know, any sort of code compliance, but it maybe gives us a ballpark figure. So I just, I don't know if we want to wait for them to do this all together in a couple of weeks, I think that's what was suggested, but I think that's maybe a more cost-effective option for us. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further hands, moving on to item 13.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve an agreement between Dean M. Hall and Jean Hall, trustees of the Article V Trust for the benefit of Dean Hall, of the Francis E. Hall Revocle Trust, and the Town of Wallingford for the purchase of forty point seventy-five acres of land at 138 Williams Road.
I'm going to put a map up here. Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Fishbein. Were you going to present, or is that just your guide, your laptop in front of you?
Neil?
Now you're on.
Neil Amway will speak to this, and I believe we have some Conservation Commission people too, but I thought, to give you an idea, this is the property we purchased on Williams Road, Stevens Property. Here is Williams Road. Here is 91, here's McKenzie Reservoir. The property in green right here, forty point seven-five acres, is 138 Williams Road. Muddy River, the blue comes down through this and ends up in McKenzie Reservoir right here. It's a great effort to protect our water supply. And the gentleman seated right there is prime for these efforts to see that our future quality and quantity of water get the best protection. So Neil?
Thank you. If you're just tuning in, once again, my name is Neil Amway, General Manager for the Wallingford Water and Sewer Divisions. So I do have a quick formal presentation, or we can just use this map and go for the highlights of this parcel.
I think the highlights are probably fine, but I'll see what questions come of your highlights.
Okay, certainly. So we'll stick with this map, so as Mayor Dickinson said, shown in red is the previous parcel that the Water Division purchased, previously known as 264 Williams Road, parcel B. It has since been renumbered to 300 Williams Road. South of that, we are looking to purchase 138 Williams Road. It is forty point seven zero acres. You can see on the right or the east side of the parcel is the Muddy River. The parcel has approximately 1,200 linear feet of the Muddy River flowing north to south through it. The Muddy River is a Class AA water course, as defined by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. The parcel is approximately 550 feet north of McKenzie Reservoir, or that's one-tenth of a mile for you doing the conversions at home. So the Muddy River flows into McKenzie Reservoir. McKenzie Reservoir watershed accounts for 75% of our watershed lands for the Wallingford Water Division, and our four surface water reservoirs account for 94% of the potable water provided to approximately 39,000 residents, businesses, and schoolchildren each day. So this parcel is key and critical for the Water Division to maintain that water quality that is running into the McKenzie Reservoir. So just going on some financials, the purchase price is eight hundred thousand dollars. We have included 25,000 dollars for soft costs, including an appraisal, appraisal review, as well as a Phase One environmental land transfer. So Agenda Item 14, we'll be looking at that budget amendment of 825,000 dollars. And since we're just going with the highlights, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
Questions from the council? Counselor Testa?
Looking to purchases with Water Division funds?
The water company will be purchasing this.
Right, from your own reserves.
And we are applying for a grant. Hopefully, we will receive help in offsetting that cost from the state of Connecticut.
Right, that's good to know. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask if Conservation is an opportunity to say something in behalf of the, of the project? They've been very involved. The chair is here.
And they should.
Mike Miller, and Jeff Borny's here. Currently, there's some agricultural use on the property. It's, um, peppers, squash, and peppers, squash, and cabbage. Two areas. Most of it's forested, but two areas are devoted to agriculture.
Hi, all. Um, I have an affirmation of endorsement for the purchase. May I hand these out?
Sure. Can you just remind us who you are for the record, please?
Oh, sorry, yeah. Mike Miller, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Conservation Commission. I'm the chairperson.
Thank you. Do you have one for the clerk?
Mr. Chairman, while, while he's handing that out, uh, the Hall family, uh, were some of the founders of this town. And, um, I think it's, it's, it's very nice to see that they continue to support the health and prosperity in the community by, um, making this sale to the town of Wallingford. The Halls have been here for a long time, and we want them here a lot longer, but, uh, it was nice dealing with the family.
So, um, the Wallingford Conservation Commission very strongly recommends the purchase and preservation of this property as the affirmation attests to. Uh, I'm gonna bypass the first page, basically, because Mr. Amway has already sold it so well, and I would just kind of be rehashing what he said. But I'm gonna cut to the chase here, and I'm gonna say that, you know, in the, um, opinion of the Conservation Commission, losing this property to development would mean, obviously, the loss of the, uh, mentioned contributions to our clean drinking water supply. It would impact the town's existing water supply from such things as fertilizer, pesticide, oil runoff, et cetera. It would, uh, increase the long-term cost to the town for things such as education, infrastructure, maintenance, and other municipal services. So this is actually saving the town money in the long run. And it would, um, be a loss of passive recreational use for the public. So preserving the property will help ensure clean, high-quality drinking water supply for the town, help to counteract climate change via carbon se- sequestration, provide passive recreational opportunities for the public. It would protect the river, wetland, and forest habitat for a variety of plants and wildlife. It will add to the wildlife corridor that helps to connect the open space to the north with the Tyler Mill Preserve to the south. It will help maintain the rural attributes of this part of Wallingford, which residents desire and some of the local businesses rely on. And it will maintain the overall quality of life in Wallingford. So for all of these reasons, the Wallingford Conservation Commission very strongly recommends the purchase and preservation of the property. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Standing behind Neil Amway and, and Mike Miller, I'm Jeff Borny. I was former chairman of the Wallingford Conservation Commission, and now I just chair the Land Acquisition Committee of it. But I want to say, we reviewed this property in two thousand and eight when there was a possible interest in, in the town purchasing and the Hall selling. At that time, things didn't work out, and, and so fifteen years later, here we are again, and, uh, just last week, we had the opportunity to walk over the property with Mr. Hall and the mayor. And, um, I can tell you, after fifteen years, the property hasn't changed, other than the forest has grown for another fifteen years, and that the Halls have been very good stewards of this property this whole time. So just on behalf of Mike and, and Neil Amway, another supporter for the acquisition of this property. If you have any questions of what we saw out there, uh, we're here to answer those.
Thank you. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Amway, would you mind, just for the benefit of the public, um, going over the, the grant opportunity that, that we're going to be pursuing?
Apparently, let me just, you know what? I rely on my written notes, if you don't mind. There we go. So there is an open space and watershed land, land grant that is administered by the state of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. It does provide financial assistance to water companies to acquire land to be classified as Class One or Class Two water supply property. And after acquisition of one thirty-eight Williams Road, approximately twenty percent of the property will be classified as Class One lands, and the remaining eighty percent will be classified as Class Two lands. So it does provide up to a seventy-five percent grant of the DEEP-approved fair market value of the property. Land purchase may not be for intensive recreation, residential use, or commercial, um, purposes. Land already owned by the applicant is not eligible. Um, it is highly competitive with limited funding. I think one of the unique aspects of the Wallingford Water Division's and the town of Wallingford's grant application is we are a water company that is buying watershed land that will then be maintained by the water utility. We have a built-in watershed crew, and we have built-in funding. This is in our wheelhouse. This is our business. There are some administrative and natural resources aspects to it. So we need to provide a statement showing purchase, the purchase funds are available. We do have the capability to operate and maintain the property, and we do, as part of our grant application, submit municipal support letters. And again, it preserves drinking water resources, and it will be classified as Class One and Class Two lands following acquisition by the town.
Thank you.
That, I'm sorry, did that answer your questions?
It does. Thank you.
So, and I will point out, we are quickly racing towards this grant application deadline, which is Monday, October second, so that is six days from now. I do want to, I will take this opportunity to acknowledge Sandy Coker from my office, Allison Kapaschinsky, the Town Engineer, Tiffany Shipman, the Assistant Town Engineer, peer review by Janice Small, and actually, as Jeff just commented, when they did look at this property in two thousand and eight, he provided a very detailed memo, which has also assisted. It's a very comprehensive application. Application is twenty-four pages long. Last I counted, we are about at eighteen attachments.
Thank you. I just wanted to, um, just touch base on that, because I know that, hopefully, I'm hopeful that that grant is, oh. I'm hopeful that that grant is, uh, we'll be able to take advantage of that, so thank you for explaining that.
And just as a summary, don't forget, for two sixty-four Williams Road Parcel B., the purchase price was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We did receive a grant for four hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for that parcel.
Wonderful. Thank, yeah, thank you, and thanks to everyone for their work on, on getting those grants and hopefully getting this one. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. So now we'll have more land where Pomeranians can play. All right, um, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Harmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Morone?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Cervoni?
Yes. Motion passes, and, uh, we need a motion on item fourteen, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve an appropriation from cash to land and land rights in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from appropriation from cash accounts.
Second.
Moved and seconded, so this is completely Water Division money, correct?
Correct, and so the slide behind you, I will read it. So the negotiated purchase price is eight hundred thousand dollars. We do have Department of Law expenses. We refer to these as soft expenses. Attorney Small may think otherwise. Um, so our budgeted amendment is eight hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. It will go into the land and land rights account. If I was a ratepayer, the question I would be asking is, can the Water Division afford this? So as, I'll quickly go through our financials. So as of July one, twenty twenty-three, our forecasted cash above minimum is eight million, two eight four, two five eight. And so then, when you subtract out the acquisition of expenses of eight hundred twenty-five thousand, post-acquisition, the forecasted cash above minimum for the Water Division is seven point five million dollars.
So, uh, if we get the grant, that money can go back to the fund we've depleted this from, not depleted, but taken.
So when we receive the grant, it actually gets booked as miscellaneous revenue. It goes into the big piggy, piggy bank of Water Division, but it does not go back into this specific line item. It gets booked as miscellaneous revenue.
Fair enough. Questions from the council? Questions from the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Harmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Morone?
Tada? Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Cervoni?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Amway. Do we need a technical moment, or? All right. Uh, while Mr. Amway tears down onto item fifteen, Counselor Fishbein, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I believe Mr. Tribber is here. He's getting set up. Um, as many know, the Building Maintenance Committee came before us, I think it was August sixteenth, and presented to us a, um, PowerPoint presentation. There was no comment from the administration nor any department heads with regard to that on that night. In my reviewing of that, I did, uh, see some things that I wanted at least have a discussion about, um, and I did go through their presentation and took out certain pictures that I didn't think were necessarily relevant to safety, with the intent of having an exchange with Mr. Tribber, who I believe is our only certified, uh, playground specialist, uh, in town, so. And Mr. Tribber, I, I know, I think you were given a copy of the presentation. Um, I don't know when you got it. But I would expect that you've had enough time to look at the pictures.
I've reviewed it.
Okay. Um, you know, initially, I was a little concerned because, uh, I think this, this item was on the agenda for, it might have been September twelfth, and, um, that you hadn't been apparently given a copy of the presentation by that date, and, you know, I'll move forward from there, but this first photo, uh, which represents to be at Wallace Park, apparently is of some sort of, um, handicap access ramps. And, um, did you have any, I mean, is, did you have any part of installation of these or approval of these?
No.
So, did you review them at any time?
No.
Okay, is are these, is this the way these are supposed to go in?
It appears to be installed according to the way that the manufacturer designed.
Okay, so have you had the opportunity to review the manufacturer's specifications and installation instructions?
I did not, no.
Okay. So when you say that it appears, um, it's a ramp, right? It's, it's down, it appears to be affixed. But when I talk with other communities dealing with these ramps or something similar, I haven't run across one yet that requires a handicap, I, I would assume that for people with wheelchairs, right? Or some sort of mode, maybe a, maybe one of those motorized, um, scooter, items, um, requiring them to traverse the grass to get to the ramp. And I know it came up that night, whether or not that was standard practice, and I don't know, as a, as a playground safety person, is that approved? I mean, is that what, what's supposed to happen here?
So I am not an ADA, uh, trained individual. Uh, the only time that I get involved in ADA as it pertains to playgrounds is a very limited scope. And so generally, the ADA requirements as it pertains to public playgrounds has sort of a three-pronged approach. And so the first approach would be that the, an access path would be required if you are coming from a building or a parking lot. Uh, and so this park does not meet that first requirement. The next one would be whether or not there's an accessible, uh, method to enter into the play area, which these ramps do provide that. And then finally, the surfacing would have to be, uh, suitable for, um, someone in a wheelchair, and that, uh, safety surfacing does meet that requirement. It should be noted, um, this particular playground has been in existence, uh, long before my time. I don't view it as an ADA accessible playground. It was never designed that way, from what I can tell, but I don't know, I can't speak to the, uh, initial installation of it. What the, uh, concept here is what we're, what was trying to be accomplished was an upgrading of the safety surfacing. Uh, we've utilized this system, this particular system, at two additional parks in town. Uh, and it's, we've had pretty good success with it because it does not require us to do a lot of digging. We can install these, uh, curbs, for lack of a better term, and then we can fill them to, uh, required depth, and these ramps are merely just allowing people access into the play area. So, um, again, we didn't modify or change this particular playground, excuse me, uh, by putting these in here, it was merely to enhance the, uh, the safety surfacing.
And, and this is Wallace Park, so you, you've been there?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and there's a sidewalk on the other side of these play areas?
Yes.
So, I, I mean, who would, wouldn't it make more sense to have them near the sidewalk? I mean, this, this is about thirty feet from any accessible sidewalk on both of, at least thirty feet from any accessible sidewalk, where if they were on the other side, they're about eight feet from an accessible sidewalk. So I'm just trying to, you know, it, it almost, I, I could see someone in a wheelchair taking offense. And it's not funny. I mean, inviting someone into a play area, it's like dangling something in sun, in front of someone's face. It's impossible for someone to traverse the grassed area to get to these ramps to access. It's virtually impossible. I guess it is, it is possible, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's uneven grass to begin with, but so there's no standards that you're aware of with regard to, and you, I, I understand the ADA situation, you are. to, and I understand the ADA situation, you are not, are you, are you trained in that area?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Well, I mean, we'll go on, but, we'll go on. The, the next set of slides, I mean, the basketball hoop is not so much of a safety issue. So I'm going to stay away from that. I just want to point out that I think the photo was taken in July. It is in a, an area of town that, it's right by the Boys and Girls Club. There's a lot of kids playing in the streets and stuff like that. And, you know, not having a basketball hoop, at least on that day, I don't know. But the cracks to the right appear to have been there for a while. And I know the one in the upper photo, you know, I got cracks in my driveway, right? There's weeds in them, whatever. But the lower photo appears to be significant. And my understanding is that you inspected our parks on October, on or about October twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two, and rendered an opinion that there were no safety issues. Is that, that's the report that we got from the administration? Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So are cracks part of safety review as, because I'm not a certified playground expert, so in safety. Is that part of the review that you're supposed to conduct?
No.
Okay. So?
Strictly playgrounds.
Excuse me?
Strictly playgrounds.
Okay. Well, this, this appears to be a crack added playground, so?
Playground, I'm meaning play equipment, not, not fields, not basketball courts. None of those things come under that jurisdictional inspection for a playground safety inspector.
Okay. So when it's represented to us that there are no safety concerns at the parks, that's excluding basketball courts, soccer fields, baseball fields, all of that stuff, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we have Doolittle Park with another crack, and I guess we put that under the same umbrella. To the right?
Actually, I can jump in right there if you don't mind, Counselor Fishbein.
Absolutely.
So the Doolittle Park basketball court is actually under contract. So both courts, the Henry Street and the Wall Street Courts are under contract, with work scheduled to begin any time within the next week or two, hopefully.
I appreciate that. I'm very distressed over the representation that our parks are safe, that there's no safety issues. And what I'm hearing tonight as to what the representations are, as to what is safe or what's not safe, or what was reviewed and what's not reviewed. The picture to the right appears to be some sort of playground implement, which I think, Mr. Tribber, that would fall within the purview of your safety situation.
Yes.
And, I mean, I can't tell, there's like no, you know, usually you put a quarter there or something like that, so we can see perspective or size. Are you aware of this condition that's depicted in that photo?
Not this particular condition, but upon receiving the report, I did speak with Director Michaels. And this particular situation, I believe it's a missing cap that covers those two screws. And I believe that part has been on order for some time. You know, Mr. Michaels can speak to that. But in this particular piece of equipment, so this is a modern version of a seesaw, so to speak. And so children will sit on either end of this, and they will teeter totter back and forth. So in reviewing this particular area, the white or brown area that you see is not necessarily a play area. Children wouldn't be playing on that particular piece. They'd be sitting on either end. So if I were to review this and come across this condition, I would categorize it as probably a category five, which would be like a maintenance item, meaning the cap is missing and the cap should be replaced.
Do we know how long the cap has been missing?
I am not aware of how long it's been missing, but it was not missing, I don't believe it was missing when we did our inspection last year.
No, and it wasn't. We had some maintenance work that was done recently at the playground. And that cap was part of the order, but it did not come in. So we're waiting on the company to send us that cap.
Okay. And you concur that the underneath of this area is back and forth. When I, when I looked at the picture originally, quite frankly, I thought it was an area that somebody might walk over. So I recognized the bubbles in the middle to possibly be trip hazards. But as Mr. Tribber says, if somebody is sitting on either side, then they're not walking over it, or they shouldn't be. So you concur that it's a seesaw of some sort that somebody wouldn't be walking over, right? Is that fair? Or you don't know?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking to Mr. Tribber. That's correct.
Okay.
It does. It rocks back and forth. So if you envision, if you envision the smaller caps on either side, it would just be one, probably about double that size that goes in the middle.
Okay. And, you know, once again, that night, there was nobody here to, so I, you know. Moving to the Doolittle Park photos, the left photo appears to be a condition underneath the bench, I think. And is that something, Mr. Tribber, that would fall within your safety review?
So it might be something that we know when we do our walk around, because we do walk through the entire park area. And again, I would classify that sort of as a maintenance item, depending upon the location of this bench. So if it's in a sort of a higher traffic area, it might be something that we call out if it's in the lesser of a traffic area. It's my understanding that this is located behind the tennis courts and such. It's along, I believe, Henry Street. And that particular area, even though we've redone the tennis courts, we do have a washout situation that occurs from time to time over there. So I know we've probably called these out, and there has been some maintenance done on them. But it's a continual thing. I believe there's another slide somewhere that shows a tennis area that also has a particular washout area. So from, from my standpoint, again, I'd probably tag this as a maintenance item, you know, where we bring in some additional fill or maybe some stone dust to cover up the top of the exposed concrete base.
Yeah, I looked at what appears to be stone dust, and it appears that there's finer dust up top and coarser dust down the bottom. It appears, at least for me, to be a condition that's been there for a while. But I'm trying to figure out, it looks like a trip hazard, right? Because one, one inch deviation is usually industry standard for a trip hazard. This would or would not fall within your purview? You indicated there'd be something to note.
So it wouldn't be something as a playground safety inspector that I would be looking at? I would be looking at it more from a, say, a risk management standpoint. Based on the photo, it's hard to tell. But I think if you were to drop a plumb line from the end of the seat, that it would probably just meet the lower end of where that concrete is. So it would be questionable as to whether it would be a trip hazard, because someone would have to be traversing back and forth in front of it versus going to sit down on it. So, you know, again, it's probably arguable if it's a trip hazard or not. But from an inspection standpoint or a hazard classification, it wouldn't be a higher hazard, for my view. And again, when I do these inspections, it's discretionary in nature. And so it allows me, you know, the ability to have some discretion as to whether I determine to be a safety issuer or not.
Oh, sure. Because you're the risk manager also. So I guess you wear the two hats. So it's?
Multiple.
Yeah. Well, agreed. And when you do your review, that's an annual review, correct?
Approximately, yes.
And do you issue a report as a result of that review?
I do not. I usually am accompanied by someone from the parking rec staff, if it's not Mr. Michaels, someone else, and they jot down the notes of the things that I've pointed out.
So a condition like this, let's just say that somebody tripped over it, would be a premises liability claim. And defense to premises liability claim is that the owner of the property didn't have an opportunity to cure. Why, why wouldn't it be appropriate for you to document that it wasn't there on a particular day? And then somebody, let's just say somebody trips the next day. There was a big rainstorm overnight, right? It would be a defense to any claim that it was a rainstorm overnight. We didn't have an opportunity to cure it. Is it just your practice that you don't document? Or is there some sort of industry direction? I'm just trying to figure out.
So I'm trying to understand the question. You would say that if, so as I go through the parks, I'm to document the non-hazards?
Yes.
Say that they're, they didn't exist at that time?
Yes. If you went through a park and, and let's say, take photographs?
Okay.
And document the condition of the park, and then somebody gets hurt and claims that we had a duty to keep that park safe, and we breached that duty, therefore creating personal injuries, you would be able to defend, saying we just took a picture of it, or we had a picture of it. That's a condition that we didn't have the opportunity to cure. So I'm just trying to figure, I mean, that's, that's a common defense to premises liability case. So why don't we document when we do these, these walkthroughs?
I don't think I ever have, and I've not really ever heard of documenting conditions that don't exist.
We do it with snow and ice cases.
Okay. Well, that's, that's your line of work. But it's not, you know, something that I do in that. And I guess that's not, it's just a general practice. We don't, I don't do it.
Okay. The stairs, those stairs have been there forever. And is that, Mr. Tribber, an area that would come within your purview as to safety?
It'd be something we, I would look at. You know, as you said, it looks like they've been there for a while. And I'm assuming the purpose was to bring people from, again, I believe that's Henry Street, down into the park. And so, you know, the usage of them and, you know, the condition of them. I mean, again, they've been there for quite some time. I guess I would leave that up to maybe Parks, Parkinson Rec or Public Works to determine whether they wanted to do any kind of repairs on them, or possibly take them out, if they don't, no longer deem them to be of value.
Well, I'm, I'm asking you to wear your playground safety hat.
Yeah, it wouldn't fall in that purview as a playground inspector. It would only probably come in maybe, say, as a risk manager. And then I guess I would evaluate the overall potential of the risk and what the potential is that someone may be injured on that if they were to come down and fall into the grass.
Because stairs on property like this usually require railings.
Oh, yeah. No, it doesn't, I'm not the building official. You'd probably be better off asking him if this falls under the purview of the building official. But you're correct. It doesn't have the railings. It doesn't have the proper rise and run. Most likely, looking at this, I haven't measured it. I'm not an expert in that area. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't look like it would have, meet any of those particular codes. So I don't know when they were installed or what their purpose was. But, you know, maybe the recommendation would be take them out.
And I might have to understand that when you've done your walkthroughs of Doolittle Park, as the risk manager, you've never noted that they should either be taken out, or a railing should go in, or something like that?
Not to my knowledge, that I can remember seeing them or commenting on them. Doesn't ring a bell that I have, so.
Okay. The, I'm going to stay away. And the next picture to the left, well?
Well, yeah, just what is that? I don't even know.
That's the old dam at the Doolittle Park. And, you know, I gotta tell you, I think it's an attractive nuisance. I used to play there as a kid, catch crayfish and stuff like that, right?
I tend to agree with you.
Yeah. It's, anyway, we're going to go on.
Okay.
So to the right of that, and I think you already indicated, you know, something about a washout or something, that's like a four inch deviation.
So it's interesting, because in looking at this particular picture, again, I did, I contacted Mr. Michaels, and it was kind of, it's hard. Some of the pictures don't give you a true perspective of where they are. So in speaking with him, this is the new tennis courts that were put in. And he might be able to give you a little more background on some of this. But I believe when it was done, it was up to the, to the height and standard, and it was a washout there. And so this was installed, I believe, in between the time we did our last inspection and now. So I was not aware of this condition, because this condition didn't exist at the time that we did our walkthrough of those courts, because they're relatively new and coming online. So, you know, again, we'd have to look at it and see. But I know that particular area, and even in front of the tennis courts, having gone to the Garden Market a few times, you know, it is a little rough in that particular area due to the way that everything slopes coming off Henry Street. So, you know, again, Mr. Michaels might be able to shed some more light on it. But it, you know, it is an area that probably needs to be, you know, the, either stone dust or some type of aggregate put there to bring it up.
And, and that, that is correct. So when it was, the project was complete, it was flush with a tapered, you know, tapered off of the court, you know, facing down. And some torrential pours and rainstorms tends to wash some of that stuff away. So it is something that we've had filled. It's something that has washed out and appears to have washed out again. So it's something that will be addressed.
The train station into, now, my understanding is that the, I think they call it efflorescence on the brickwork. Somebody recently painted over it. Is that, is anybody, maybe Rob, maybe you know, did somebody just paint over that?
So this is efflorescence. It is, you know, indication of moisture coming through. And what that white flakingness is, is minerals from the grout. It's not hazardous. The painting you're referring to was actually a masonry block, a waterproof. So let me just tell you how that kind of came to be. You know, in addition to, you know, the photos by the Building Maintenance Committee, I was contacted by Adult Education, and they were looking to, where these photos are taken, I believe, are in the south end of the building. It's really a storage area now. It used to be a childcare area. And the Adult Education was looking to create two or three workspaces in this area. They were concerned about the efflorescence. I got ahold of our town vendor, our masonry contractor, who made a recommendation. And, you know, we could call it paint, but it's really a masonry block. It's very similar to what you would use, you know, on a basement wall that was weeping or had moisture.
And that masonry vendor, is that the outfit out of New York?
It is. It's still the town's vendor, correct? I believe he's out of Meriden now, but it is the one you're referring to.
I think he operates two offices. But, yeah. We'll stay away from that bit at this point. The door situation, I gotta ask.
Yeah.
What is it?
Well, it's silly looking, I'll give you that. It's existed for an awfully long time. You know, it's, it's, not to make an excuse, but I think, you know, we can't even blame any of, even my predecessors for this. This has been here for quite a while. Probably goes back to the seventies, when the Yale School of Architecture did interior renovations in this building. But what it is, is an accessway. So if you could picture, if you went into this door, go under the stairs and to the right, and you get access to some ductwork. That's really all that's in that area, is the ductwork. I had conversations with the fire marshal, if we even need access to that. The solution is probably as simple as removing this door and sheet rocking, sheet rocking that portion of the wall. And then it would just be concealed ductwork, like any part in any building. But, you know, again, I'm working with the fire marshal on that.
So it was represented to us that it's the furnace room for this building?
There's ductwork in there, but the furnaces are on the other side, the north side of the building. And I will double check. So I, I will tell you, I'm telling you this in ninety-nine percent confidence, that there's nothing that is fuel-fired in that area that is ductwork. And if I'm wrong, I'll come back here and stand corrected, but.
So if you walled it in, and there was a problem with the ductwork, how would you act? how would you access?
You'd go through the sheet rock, just like we would in any building if you had a problem with, with ductwork in a wall.
We've talked a lot tonight about the train station interior, and... I'm gonna stay, I mean, the train station is the train station is the train station. I guess my, my concern here is the photo to the right, which appears to be some sort of electrical wires. Now granted, there's nothing, it appears to be there that are flammable or something like that. But do we know are those live wires?
Uh, they're not. So I believe all three of these photos are taken from the, I call it the appendage off of the basement of the railroad building. It's also what used to be the tunnel that was discussed earlier this evening. As you can see, it's been bulk headed off approximately eight feet in. That power that used to be in there for, for light has been long since disconnected, so there is no power in that area. I'm pretty confident that the photo on the very right is also in that appendage, I'll call it, but I'm not sure.
My concern is raised because when we go to the middle photograph, that note on the, on the door says, "Do not turn on light."
And that's a fair enough point. It's, although it's still in good shape, it's probably a very old sign or note. It's been disconnected for years.
Okay. In the train station interior or exterior, I noted, you know, once again, it's the train station, it's gonna get redone. But I didn't know, Mr. Tribber, if you've indicated that threshold to be a trip hazard?
Would you define it as a trip hazard because of the height of it?
Yeah, because it appears to be, it appears to be brick.
Brick would look like some type of, maybe a slate or granite cap.
Yeah, it's like a four inch high threshold walking into that, and...
So not knowing if, I don't believe this is the main entrance to the station, so I'm not sure if this is a, an auxiliary entrance or exit. You know, it, it may be a trip hazard, but I'm, I'm not quite sure what you would do to alleviate that just given the fact that you'd have to do some renovations to that to remove that trip hazard, if you would define it as one. And, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not specific on which either entrance or exit that is.
And one way to perhaps deal with it is to put a slight ramp there.
Well, but then you would be possibly making a trip hazard from someone walking, you know, in front of it back and forth. So you may correct one and create another.
You may, and I leave that to you. I mean, if it's never been recognized, you know, I think it...
I can tell you, I, I don't believe it's been recognized as a trip hazard, nor am I familiar with any claims that have come regarding any of the entrances or exits to the train station regarding falls.
And that's helpful. I think it is a side accessway. I just, the deviation just stuck out.
Yeah, I mean, it might be something we can get with the building official, and he might be able to give us some pointers or tips on what would alleviate that, if, if, if that's what's to be determined.
Thank you. So moving on to the Town Hall structure, the photograph to the left, it appears that that window may be caving in. I, I don't know what the status of that is. So I certainly would be concerned as an employee in this building of seeing that. Rob, did you know about that?
Um, I became aware of it, you know, when I was presented with the photo. In all honesty, I'd never observed it myself, which is really surprising. I look at the building all the time. So what that is, from the parking lot side, so that is the west elevation, that is a smaller window on the second floor that belongs to the restroom in the former Town Council office. There's a restroom in there, and that's, that's the window. So we were able to get up there and, and take a look at this through the window and through adjacent windows. It actually looks as if there was a repair already done, and that's what you're seeing in that, that, that cracking. That's actually grout work that was done sometime in, I won't say the recent past, but in the past. And what my best thought is on how that happened is you have a steel lintel over that, that window. I mean, that's gonna be typical in brick construction, have a steel lintel to support the opening. If, if the lintel rusts, rusty metal will expand and it'll start to crack that, that brick. But it looks like an repair, a repair was done. For what it's worth, you know, we're able to see what we could see from the window. I am scheduled to have my building maintenance tech go out there with a bucket truck and observe it, you know, better. And if the grout work needs to be repaired, that'll get done. If the lintel is, is rusty, it'll be ground down and painted with an exterior paint and, and sealed up.
But the window is intact, and I think it's the angle that you're seeing it at. But the window is definitely intact.
What we also did on the inside, just to make sure water wasn't coming in, is we took a moisture reading of the sheet rock right inside that, that window in that area.
I appreciate that. Mr. Tribber, when you said the window's intact...
Well, you had indicated that it looked like it was falling in. It's really not, I believe it's the angle that it is, and, and the window was looked at, so it is, it is in place, and it's, there was no issues that were found when they looked at it.
I appreciate that. The picture to the right, or it's in the center, appears to be some sort of water situation. Do we know where that is and what the status of that is?
Yeah, so I was able to find this location. I believe it is the men's room on the first floor here at Town Hall. This piping actually, so this goes, obviously outdoors to a water spigot that no longer is in, in use. In fact, this pipe is not even active anymore. We also took a moisture reading at this location, and while, yes, I would agree that this was the result of, you know, some water intrusion at some point, it must have been corrected because the moisture reading was, was very low, indicating that the leak does not exist.
And that valve is shut off?
That valve is shut off.
Okay. The upper with the vent?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's an interesting one because, sudden little backstory on that one. We had gotten some concerns about the bathrooms and the conditions of the bathrooms a while back. So myself and Mr. Baltimore Midas and Mr. Palermo reviewed all the bathrooms. This particular location is the lower bathroom outside of the building department. It's a ladies' bathroom, we walk down a small hallway. When we were reviewing that, in most of these bathrooms is exhaust fans. And so what you're looking at is an exhaust fan. It's not an HVAC, it has nothing to do with the HVAC system. And so the cover was missing from the exhaust fan. This is mounted on the wall rather than the ceiling. And so at that time, it was noted, I recommended that they put a cover over it to allow it to still function, but not have access to the inside turbine. So Public Works went, retrofitted it with this particular grate, for lack of a better term. And so the fan is both above the ceiling and below the ceiling. That's why the tile was cut out that way, so as to not obstruct the airflow. So it's a bathroom vent. It has nothing to do with the HVAC system whatsoever.
But is the piping above the vent? Or is it? I just, I couldn't tell.
I didn't, I, I personally didn't remove the ceiling tile, so I, I don't know the orientation of the piping, but it was a bed fan.
Because it, the wall there is some sort of stone, whether it be tile, concrete, whatever, I believe. And I don't think the ductwork goes down that low. So it appeared to me, at least, and I enlarged the photo, that the ductwork is up and the vent is covering like half of the ductwork. Is that...
No, I think it's a little lower than what it's showing as far as the way that the orientation of the vent is in that particular bathroom. Again, it was existing, I don't know when it was put in, but the, that's what that is, is an exhaust fan.
And when you say an exhaust, where is the electrical for that?
I don't know if it's automatic when you go in. A lot of these bathrooms, when you go into them, they have automatic sensors, so the lights go on and then the fans go on. So I don't know if that one is particularly hooked up to that. I didn't look at that aspect of it.
It didn't appear that there was an actual, like, fan blade or something?
No, it's a, it's a small turbine. It's a small, round turbine type of fan.
Okay. Well, it's in the ladies' room, so I'm never gonna get in there. The photo below that, I would, and I don't know if you guys were able to identify where that is. Were you, Rob?
I, I was. We, we found that ironically in the building department.
Okay.
So what it, what it turned out to be is an old phone line. It was, it was cut off from the backside of the wall in a utility closet. You know, and, and I believe that even as of today, you know, the, the wire and the, the little bit of conduit there has been removed and the wall patched.
All right, so that was done after the Building and Maintenance Group came in? I think that's it for photos. I thank you, gentlemen, for coming and having the discussion, and I defer to the rest of the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no hands on the council. Mr. Ramos, I know you're a member of the committee. If you could just identify yourself for the record.
Gabriel Ramos, Old Rock Hill Road. When I started this committee, I know I was sitting over here and I did say that our purpose, from my experience, was to weed out the trivial many from the critical few. So what we present to you is something that we could not wrap our head around and say, "That's not critical," or "That's whatever, so let somebody else look at it." I got a lot of training in, in safety. I worked at Allegheny, Ludlam, or Wallenford Steel here for forty-one years. I ended up being the superintendent of the maintenance department. I have extensive training in safety because we wanted to qualify with the ISO nine thousand two. So we had to have certain numbers to be able to qualify and sell worldwide. We, we, our safety record went down to one point four of a factory that held over four hundred employees. Safety is a mindset, and it should be in everybody's mind. Everybody should be responsible for safety conditions. If you see something, say something. "Oh, that's not my job," that's what you get. Anybody looking at anything should say it. That's how you're gonna get to be good, that's how you're gonna get things done, and people are gonna respect everybody's opinion. I also worked very long on a manufacturing excellence program. I was a coordinator and a trainer. And our objective was to train everybody at our factory to work with customers even, go even to customers' plants on problem solving. It's a big project, it's a big job, but it does give results. Basically, work together, respect everybody's opinion. Nobody has a dumb idea. If somebody says something that doesn't line up with anything, then say, "Hey, correct," not criticize. So I want our committee to, when we're finally done for this council, this town, to say, "Boy, those guys did a good job. We got a lot of talent on our team, a lot of talent. And I'm very proud of what we've done so far, and we're gonna get better." The next pictures you see are gonna be labeled with numbers, are gonna be described what it is, okay? So we are making strides to make it easier for everybody and better. Thank you.
Mr. Michael?
Jason Michael, eighty-one Meadow Street. In the efforts to keep decorum in the room, I'm gonna keep this brief. I, I have found some of the answers here tonight to be, at best, disingenuous. I've seen every inch of every park that we took pictures of. As I speak, Luffberry Park has a playground with zero fall protection. Zero. Rock hard, hard pan, under two and a half foot falls off the end of a slide. If that's not a safety issue, please correct me. I'm no expert, I'm the first, I'm the first to admit it. But that's just one example. It's sitting there now, it's been that way for years. I'll leave it at that.
Anyone else? There being none, I bring it back to the council. Still seeing no hands. I believe that's all the business we have on our agenda, and therefore I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Ooh, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, we're adjourned.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Good evening.